How are we good, WCTV? Great, awesome. We are good. So it is April 9th. This is the meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. All of the members of the Board of Selectmen are present this evening. Thank you for your waiting for us for a few moments. We were finishing with an executive session to approve a series of executive session minutes from the last few years, so we're catching up with those, and that's the good news. I'd like to invite everyone present here this evening to stand up and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
That was awesome, ladies. That was awesome. Excellent to have extra help.
(inaudible)
I wanted to just make note, and some of you will probably recognize, that each of the members here up at the table, all of the members of the Board of Selectmen, as well as our town manager and Beverly, are wearing an item of blue, and that is in recognition of April being Autism Awareness Month. This was brought to our attention several years ago, and it's a tradition that we're very, very happy to continue here at the Board of Selectmen level. You'll also recognize or hopefully notice when you drive by Wilmington Common, it is illuminated in blue, also in recognition of April being Autism Awareness Month. So thank you for that. We do have a Treasury warrant to approve, 3939A, 40 and 40A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's made.
Second.
And seconded, it is the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We have no minutes to approve, which will bring us to our scheduled 7:00 appointment with Teresa Smith of the Daisy Troop Leader, Troop 62547, with regards to the free library and rock garden at Rotary Park. So Ms. Smith? And company?
So our troop came up with an idea to share their love for books with the town, and anyone who wishes to have a book but may not be able to afford one, or would like to donate one. We have a picture of a free library. It looks about the size of a mailbox, and our idea is that we would fill it weekly or bi-weekly with books, and anyone who walks by can take one and just keep. And then Olivia has a rock that has a positive message, and we think that it'd be nice to fill the area underneath the free library with rocks that have positive messages on them.
Outstanding.
(inaudible)
What a worthwhile project. Where do you plan, where's the box, where do you plan to have it, at Rotary Park specifically?
With some discussion, there, I guess, there's a spot where the lawnmower can easily, you know, cut the grass around it, between the tree and the pond that's there.
Excellent.
But, you know, it's subject to change.
Yeah.
We'll work with whoever maintains the park to put it in a spot that's good.
So there have been some discussions with Mike Woods, the Public Works Superintendent. He certainly endorses the idea, and I think the preliminary conversation has been to perhaps locate the free library between the Collier Memorial Tree and the pond there along the trail. But we'll work out the details.
I think it's a fun project. So I'm sorry, maybe you said it, and I, it passed. So books will be in the box, and so are folks encouraged to leave a book, take a book, kind of thing? It's just a free in and out?
Absolutely. If anyone wanted to leave a book, they can, feel free to do so, but they're not obligated to. The girls are really excited to share their books, and have already collected some books that they want to share with others. So we would actually maintain it, and the structure as well. We meet as United Church of this Church, so it'd be very easy for us to maintain it by going over at our bi-weekly meetings.
It's great. I think it's such a great idea. I think it's, obviously, it's, from my opinion, it brings attention to your great troop and your organization, but also brings, you know, reading to the masses and to all the other children that may not be part of the Scouts. So congratulations, and thanks for bringing it to our attention. I want to make sure that my colleagues have an opportunity to say hello, or offer any comments, or anybody?
It's a great idea. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Just want to say thanks, listen to your mamas. They know what they're doing, so listen to your parents, and you girls look fantastic. It's really nice to see that you're doing this, and I wouldn't care if you started singing the Star Spangled Banner if you wanted to. It's up to the chairman, you know? And thanks, kids.
We won't put him on the spot. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think it's a real cool idea. It's really good. I just thought, maybe with the permission from the young ladies, would it be possible if Mike Woods could put a, sort of a stand, maybe four feet high, to get this off the ground? So that way it won't get ruined. You know, if it's made of wood, we don't want the ground to get saturated, and that way if it gets up a little bit, sort of like a bird's house. Not so, so high that no one can reach it, obviously, but just a far, I don't know if...
Yeah, I believe that was the plan, that we would have, that would be some kind of a stand that it would be mounted on, but yeah, we will certainly work that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
As long as they agree, because they're right there.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you, ladies. This is an awesome project, so thank you for doing it, and we currently have a lot of Elmo books at my house right now, so we might be looking to get rid of a couple and donate them. So thank you so much, and I wish you guys could come to every meeting, because everybody's smiling, it's awesome. Thank you very much.
So do we need a vote on this to approve?
Yes.
So, awesome. I think chances are pretty good we're going to get a good vote here, but let's see how this goes. I'd accept a motion to approve this request.
So moved.
Second? Mr. Loud and seconded by Mr. Vendell, all in favor? Looks unanimous. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you!
All right, thank you. We thank you for your community service.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Great idea.
I'm inclined to adjourn now, if anyone's okay with that.
With it.
That's wonderful. What a great project. I love when that stuff happens. Our 7:15 appointment is with me, as your chair, to present the Board of Selectmen's annual report for calendar year 2017, and so I will ask your indulgence as I read my report that will be printed in the annual report booklet that is, I imagine, going to press, if it hasn't already. Is that right? So, forgive me. Dear fellow residents, it is my honor and privilege to present to you on behalf of my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen this annual report reviewing the board's activities in 2017. The year 2017 was marked by some major events in our country, including hurricanes in Texas and Puerto Rico, the horror of the Las Vegas concert shooting, the rare solar eclipse, our new President Donald Trump's first year of office, and the continued plague of our time, the opioid epidemic, just to name a few. While these and many others dominated the news cycles, we, the residents of Wilmington, continue to live our lives and do the best we can for ourselves and for those we care about each day. While we all care about what is happening around the world, in international and domestic affairs, and at the State House, it is here, in Wilmington, where we all hang our hats at the end of the day, and where we have all chosen to call home. As such, we, your fellow residents and elected volunteer members of your Board of Selectmen, have passionately and steadfastly been on the job. Our focus continues to be to maintain high-level services to all residents today while ensuring a sturdy foundation for the future of our town. Through steady and open meetings and communications among the five members of the Board of Selectmen, and in collaboration with town administration, the board has been working hard to accentuate the positives and minimize the negatives. It should be pointed out that we had a changing of the guard after the local elections of April 2017. Selectmen and Chairman of the Board Judith O'Connell chose not to run for reelection to the board, and as a result, we were joined by Selectman Edward Loud upon his election. We are grateful for Ms. O'Connell for her years of service to our community, and are excited to have Mr. Loud as part of the team. It would be impossible to summarize the full breadth of discussions that the board undertook over the course of 2017. However, in the interest of highlighting some of the more prominent issues that were part of our operational year, I offer the following. The Board of Selectmen, in cooperation with town administration, continued its strong objection to plans by New England Transrail to locate a transloading facility at the Olin Chemical Superfund Site on Eames Street. We are joined in our opposition to this plan by our state legislators, who have been a part of our communications to the Surface Transportation Board, the federal agency that permits such operations. We have been and continue to be well-advised and represented by town council in this ongoing effort. Early in 2017, the Board of Selectmen called a special meeting in the auditorium of the middle school to gather resident sentiments about the Butters Row Bridge. In recent years, the bridge, which is controlled and maintained by the state, has been showing substantial wear and tear. Before formally reaching out to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation with any kind of request for replacement or expansion of the bridge, the board needed to know what the residents would like to see happen. More than 10 years ago, when a similar discussion had begun, residents in Wilmington expressed a desire to keep the single-lane bridge with mirrors on each side as it was. In 2017, the residents, to a large majority, concluded that the bridge as it exists is unsafe to navigate, in poor condition, and the appropriate plan should be to replace the bridge with a two-lane, modern structure. The town has made this clear to MassDOT, and we are glad to report that it is part of their future roadway enhancement project for this section of the Route 38 corridor. We hope to see construction in motion by 2020. In early spring of 2017, the town formally opened the new Yentile Recreation Facility for use. This park, the culmination of a few years of hard work by a host of community volunteers, town staff, and contractors, now serves as the town's flagship recreational space. This park has already shown itself to be widely used by residents of all ages, and is a great investment for the benefit of current and future Wilmington residents. The Board of Selectmen is grateful to all who played a role in making this project come to fruition, from its conceptual phase through its opening. As anyone who has lived in Wilmington for any more than a couple of years can attest, we take the Fourth of July very seriously around here. For decades, the Wilmington Fourth of July Committee, in cooperation with the town administration, DPW, and public safety, has organized and delivered an Independence Day celebration that spans multiple days and is the envy of our neighboring communities. During the time of the construction of our new high school, the celebration, which had traditionally taken place on the high school grounds and at the town common area, was forced to relocate temporarily to the site of our friends at the Aleppo Shrine. In 2016, the celebration made its return to the town common after much discussion, deliberation, and compromise in order to accommodate all affected parties. That event was deemed a success, and I am happy to report that again, in July of 2017, the event took place at the common without incident. I feel that it is safe to say that the Fourth of July at Wilmington Common is back and here to stay. As I mentioned earlier, opioid abuse and addiction is a problem of epidemic proportions throughout our nation. Wilmington, I regret to say, is not free from the effects of this pervasive challenge. While our public safety professionals possess the ability to respond to individuals experiencing overdoses or other problems associated with their addiction, it was clear that more help for those afflicted was necessary. To the credit of the town meeting attendees in 2016, who saw fit to vote in the budget allocation, the town, in 2017, was able to identify and hire a substance abuse program coordinator. This position, working closely with the Chief of Police, public safety personnel, and others throughout the town administration, is an integral part of Wilmington being able to coordinate the recovery, counseling, and other services needed to help save lives. While regrettable that such a role is necessary, the Board of Selectmen is unanimous in their support of this position and the work being done to help those in need, and educate everyone in hope of lessening the growth of this issue. A couple of phrases that were prominent throughout 2017 were "affordable housing" and "economic development." Through the year, the Board of Selectmen engaged in several conversations with presentations by the town's Director of Planning and Conservation regarding the town's present and forecasted stock of affordable housing, as defined by the state of Massachusetts. These discussions focused around what strategy the town ought to be pursuing with regards to ensuring that the town is able to maintain 10% affordable housing in the town by the year 2020, when the next census takes place. While no specific programs have yet to evolve from these discussions, this issue is very much on the radar screen of the Board of Selectmen and the administration. I expect more of these strategy sessions will need to take place over the course of the next year or so in order to stay ahead of this issue. Similarly, a fair amount of discussion has taken place with regards to what Wilmington should be doing to help manage and address the idea of economic development. With very visible vacant retail sites along Main Street, the question has been raised to what degree the town can or should be involved in helping cultivate a business-friendly environment. Beyond even these obvious vacant storefronts is also the question of, under what strategy should the town be engaged regarding attracting or preserving corporate enterprise in our town? Again, while these discussions continue as I write this, it is important to note that the Board of Selectmen agree that this subject deserves additional thought, analysis, and action. I expect that to continue through 2018 and beyond. We, the members of your Board of Selectmen, are privileged to be able to serve you. While we may sometimes have differences of opinions as to how best to do that, we are unanimous in our love of this great community and in our desire and intent to serve our fellow resident. We are grateful to our fellow volunteers on the various boards and committees for their work for our collective benefit. We want to express our gratitude to the town administration and all town staff for their consistent, hard work to help keep our town second to none. Lastly, let me thank you, each resident personally, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, for the trust you have placed in us. We take very seriously our pledge to do our best individually and as a board, to continue to deliver to you best-in-class services, and continue to make Wilmington a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Respectfully offered, Michael Shampf, Chairman, Board of the Selectmen. Feedback, comments, questions, criticisms?
Good job.
Well done. Well, thank you. Very well. Thank you very much for that opportunity. Our scheduled 7:15 appointment, I'm sorry, that was me, 7:30 scheduled appointment, is with Mike Morris. We're ahead of schedule, but do, is, do I have an objection from anyone of jumping right into it?
Yep.
So why don't we do that, Mr. Morris? Town accountant Anne Karen Rashes, our principal assessor, with regards to a discussion for potentially financing 333 Yandover Street if such a, I guess they, an event is necessary. Jeff, I'll ask you to maybe introduce the subject matter, and then we'll dive in.
Yes, Mr. Chair, based upon the recent meetings of the board, there's clearly been an expression of interest in acquiring the Sharapa property, and I felt it was advisable to provide some information to the board on some of the economic consequences or issues that we need to address in terms of a purchase. Obviously, at this point in time, we don't have any information as to what the cost of purchasing the property would be. I think it's fair to say, safe to say, that it would be several million dollars, but what I asked Mike Morris to do is to outline to the board, and he can go through this in some level of detail, the various options that we have in terms of the purchase, potential purchase of this property. So with that, Mike?
Yes, thank you. A few points I'd like to make regarding the memo I sent out. The amount is undetermined, so that makes the plan a little bit difficult at this time, but we tried to do as best as we could with the plan. I assume the negotiations would continue until after July 1st, so we would have to vote on any amount before July 1st in order to reserve money, if it came in free cash or capital stabilization or whatnot. I want to make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, just, if I could jump in just a quick second, that's a very key point. So we've talked a lot about the town's available free cash. As a reminder, for those who may recall this, every year at the close of our fiscal year, which is June 30th, the Department of Revenue, they're the ones that establish what every municipality's free cash number is. So at the end of the fiscal year, that number closes to zero, and then, once the books are closed, which is a function that Mike Morris has engaged in, along with Pam McKenzie, the treasurer-collector, the free cash number is then reestablished typically in October or November, depending upon the scheduling, DOR's ability to review the documentation. So effectively, as of July 1 of this current year, our free cash will be zero.
Thank you. One option on the table is always going to be to borrow. If we borrow now, the premium that we get sometimes from these authorizations would reduce the amount of the debt. Let's say hypothetically it was a million dollars, and we got a $50,000 premium, the loan would be for $950,000. Right now, in the 2019 budget as proposed, we do not have enough money to authorize the debt. We would need, you know, the fees associated with it, we would have to go out and find some money, the Finance Committee reserve, or do a transfer of some sort to fund that. The assumption I made on the borrowing was for 20 years at 4% for this exercise. We are trying to determine if this is an option, and that would be to extend any debt up to 30 years. We are trying to find out if that's legal from bond council, they are supposed to get back to us shortly. There is a thing called a useful life certificate, and you are allowed to file those by vote of the Board of Selectmen, if that is possible. We're waiting to see if that applies to the purchase of land. We are trying to maintain standard, towards standard of about 15% for free cash, about $17 million. This would require a further S&amp;P review at some point when we actually issue the debt. Use of free cash, again, as Jeff had just mentioned, will require a vote before June 30th, otherwise we have to wait till it gets certified again. We have a whole bunch of funding options, from year one to multi-year options, and I'll be very brief with these. Option one is from available funds. You just spend the money out of the available budget, and that would force basically us to reduce the budget we have out there now, depending on the amount.
So again, just to be clear on that point, so available funds being through taxation, the money that's generated through taxes and our state aid and local receipts, so given that those funds are accounted for in the budget to use, available funds would require reducing one or more, probably many budgets, to do that?
And just a small thing to the side, there's combinations of these various things, we could be here, I could probably come up with 50 different options you could do, depending on the amount. One is simply to use free cash. That would drop free cash to a rather low level, I believe, depending on the amount. Again, we don't know the amount quite yet, so it'd be difficult to make a recommendation on that. Again, you could also recapitalization, capital stabilization funds. That, again, would be a one-time exercise. That would limit money for upgrades to buildings and purchases of equipment and so on and so forth, and any building replacements as well. Finally, we could look at the options of borrowing funds. The first one is a bond anticipation note, where you borrow money in one year, and you pay interest on it the next year, and you renew it, or you go out and issue permanent debt. This is just a one-time stopgap option. Kind of pricey for this type of purchase. I think you'd be better off just issuing permanent debt in the fall at some point. The option does exist there to issue a debt exclusion, which would roughly increase taxes about 1% for everybody, if you wanted to do that. You don't have to do that, you can pay it out of the regular resources of the town, and that's we could look at using available funds, free cash, or the stabilization fund. And again, you can make all kinds of combinations of these things. And I'll take any recommendations I can get.
Yeah, so let's, I certainly want to, thank you. It's, I'll leave it at that. Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
I just want to say, you can always offer a motion, you can always offer amendments on the floor. I know you can do that. Obviously, you're better off going in with an increased article. You can't expand on it, but you can decrease it at the town meeting. So there's options on the town meeting floor, if somebody wanted to take out language, eminent domain, any of those things. I mean, that's a given, that can happen, number one. I just want to touch upon this. I knew we had 20-something million dollars in free cash, and I'm, I find this interesting. I don't know all the facts, but under free cash, it looks like we're taking close to $5 million out of the budget. So right now, we have $21,600,000. And on the bottom here, fiscal year 2019, we're taking out $4.9 million. So in essence, the free cash of the 21.6 is coming down to 16.6. Where is that $5 million going? And obviously, we're taking it out of free cash, so I just want to understand that. So we take in revenue from the taxpayers, residential and commercial, no different than a husband and wife owning a business or going out working, they pay their bills, and at the end of the month, they have money in a savings account, no different than the town, everyone has to work within their pocketbook. Seems like we're dipping into the savings account for this extra money. We don't make enough money coming in, in revenue, from the residents and industry, and we got to dip into the cash savings? Where's this money going?
This money?
Close to $5 million?
Yeah. $3 million is being kept within the town by going to the capital stabilization fund. That's $3 million. We're using $150,000 to repair the Pilcher Pump Station. We are reserving $941,800 for municipal software upgrade, a replacement, actually, and $850,000 for the repair of a water main.
I understand that. We're taking it out of free cash, so we're lowering it. We don't have a revenue source coming in from the taxes to cover this without going into free cash?
We're using free cash as an option.
As an option? But let me ask this, forget about debt exclusion, forget about loans. We don't generate enough money, the town of Wilmington, to pay for this without going into free cash? That's just the question I'm asking.
It's a funding option.
It's a funding option. But the question is, do we take in enough money on taxes in the community to pay this under $5 million as opposed to going to free cash? Do we really got to take this out of free cash?
We would have to increase our revenue estimates by $5 million, if we didn't change anything else in the budget.
So, I don't know if I'm...
So the answer to the question, do we generate enough revenue, you know, we are estimating the revenues based upon what we've received historically in terms of funds, and, you know, I guess the direct answer is no, that we do not believe that there is enough revenue that will be raised in this upcoming fiscal year to address these items unless we reduce other budgets. But to be clear, $3 million of that amount is not being expended at the moment, it's being put into a capital stabilization account. You know, we're talking right now roughly $140 million worth of identified costs associated with upgrades or replacement of buildings. I've mentioned this many times, between the various liabilities that the town has, certainly we've talked about OPEB and pension, but another liability is the capital liability, and so we're trying to increase the capital stabilization account, which essentially is a savings account that we can draw upon in the future to either, you know, if we're looking to replace or upgrade a building, to avoid having to borrow or borrow as much. So that accounts for $3 million. The $850,000, that is a water-related project, but the decision was made on my part that rather than impacting the water rates by that amount, we would take $850,000 from free cash, so that avoids impacting the water rates to that degree. Pilcher Drive, again, is another capital project, which, as we've done in the past, when we have capital projects, we use free cash to fund those, so I don't think this is unusual.
All right, let me just ask this question. All right, we're taking close to $5 million out of free cash fiscal year 2019. How much free cash do we take out of 2018, 2017 in free cash, and what do we use it for?
2018, we took $3 million out. Again, we sent that to capital stabilization, I believe. And '17, we took out 3.5 million. And, hang on one second. We put $500,000 into retirement stabilization. We put $500,000 into retirement stabilization, 1.5 into capital stabilization, and $1 million into OPEB stabilization.
I don't see the chairperson of the FinCom here, so I would assume when the FinCom, because of the statutory guide they have, whether to approve or disapprove these line items, I assume that they approved every single one of these line items, along with, they went along with the recommendation of the town manager. I assume that's what happened, relative to this almost $5 million taken out of free cash.
That's correct.
All right, so, all right. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else with questions, comments, observations? My only observation is, you know, it's hard, I certainly, as I was reading through your scenarios, the hypotheticals, I, I don't even pretend to be a financial wizard, but I couldn't, it was difficult for me to envision the hypothetical, you know, that you talked about a blend, maybe doing some from free cash from, from the, from the operational budget or some borrowing, and without an understanding of what we're talking about in terms of the total cost of the property, it's hard for me to think about what makes sense. You know, if it's, if we get a really great, if we can negotiate super terms with the owner of the property, maybe the whole thing out of free cash makes sense. Maybe it won't put us in a, I guess, a deficient or too low of a scenario without free cash. You said, I think S&amp;P recommends 15, what was the number, please?
It used to be 5% to 10%, but this is like 10 or 15 years ago, and it's evolved up to a minimum of 10, more like 15, in most communities who are double A rated and above, up to triple A rated, they're in the 15% zone.
And that puts our number at somewhere around 17 million as recommended free cash from S&amp;P in order to maintain a double A, double A plus bond rating.
Correct.
And a double A, double A plus bond rating allows us in the future to borrow if we need to at advantageous borrowing rates.
That's correct.
As opposed to if we had a lower free cash position and a lower bond rating, we would, we would be borrowing at higher rates.
It is one of the criteria, but there are a lot of criteria, but that is...
Okay, I'm, I'm simple in my view, so I'm just trying to have it, have it explained for my benefit. So, all right, I mean, again, it's, you know, I'm not a huge fan of the idea of draining free cash and putting us in a position where later, when we have investments to make for capital, whether it's a fire station or a replacement of a building, we have to go borrow and, you know, we're going to be borrowing at higher rates, so we have to be mindful of not just the short-term potential to acquire a property, but also the long-term stabilization and, I guess, needs for capital and for the, for the community. That's where my head takes me.
Mr. Chair, I would just echo that point that, you know, the, the decision about this purchase, certainly there are a number of factors to consider, but I believe that due consideration needs to be made about the, the offsets for this. To some measure, this is a bit of a zero-sum game, so there are clearly expenditures that will need to be made in the future. We have on a regular basis now for the last five or six years established a capital improvement plan, which attempts to look out five years at the various large-scale purchases that we need to make, whether it's vehicles, whether it's infrastructure upgrades, whether it's improvements to facilities. Right now, the, the next four years, we're forecasting that to be about $57 million worth of costs that will need to be borne at some point, whether they're borne on that schedule or whether it's deferred, but those are our projections. As I mentioned earlier, the facility's master plan identified significant costs in terms of, in some cases, replacing buildings, in other cases, doing upgrades. So to the extent that the town chooses to purchase this property, some of those projects are going to have to be, at best, deferred, perhaps simply not done, so I just want to make note of that. The other thing is that we will, as I would hope, we would continue to put money aside into the pension liability fund, which I think has been prudent, and I would hope will bear some fruit, so to speak, when our, our bond rating review is done. We have to retire our pension liability by 2035, it currently is at about $78 million, and we're, as you know, putting money, or have been putting money aside to expedite the paydown on that, as well, as well as putting money aside to anticipate some years in which the assessment goes up dramatically. If the stock market tails off, for example, and the retirement board deems it necessary to increase our assessment significantly, we'd be able to draw upon those funds to avoid a major problem elsewhere in the budget. To the extent that we can continue to do that, if we're spending 6, 7, 8, 9 million dollars for this property, I suspect some of that will have to be curtailed. So I just think it's important to make folks aware of that. It's not to say that the property can't be purchased, but it, I think it's to point out that, that there are consequences to that purchase.
No, I get it, no, I know there's no magic credit card, we need to put all the cards on the table, we need to see on how we're going to take the money. Is it going to be all free cash or part of free cash? And obviously, there's other options as well, so obviously, there is time to do it, and, you know, just, we need to know what we're looking at. I mean, I think it's in the best interest of the community to acquire that property, you know, so I guess that'd be up for debate, and it gives the people at the town meeting the final decision whether they want to purchase it or not, you know, and it's time right now to call it a ball or a strike. That's where we're heading. So I think let the townspeople vote, they vote to acquire it, I'd be all in favor of it, if they don't, then they don't. But let the folks make that decision, give them the opportunity to control their destiny, whether it's acquiring open space, development, or whatever, there's multiple uses we could use with that property for the public good. And there's a huge umbrella, as I stated, that the town could use it. We, we're running into cemetery, about 20 years from now, we're going to be running into cemetery space issues, where we could not say put a cemetery there, but we could relocate other areas of the community for a cemetery expansion, and maybe whatever use that is, we could use it there at the Sharapa Farm. So a lot of acreage out there, it is for the public good, and there's a huge things that we could do with that, you know, but that's obviously open for debate, and I think we welcome it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sir?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Just, how much is in the capital, capital stabilization fund now, excluding the $3 million that's going to be going in if voted upon at town meeting?
Actually, total of $4 million will go in, $1 million from regular operational funds of the town. Right now, there's about $6.4 million in there right now.
Okay. So that will go up over $10 million in that particular account?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I would just add one, one other point, and that is, I know there were some questions that were raised previously about the status of the Sharapa Farm in terms of its situation related to 61A. Karen Rashes is the principal assessor, and I thought it might be helpful if people had, if members of the board had particular questions about that, she can perhaps address those.
Yeah, I know we had some questions at the last and maybe the meeting prior to that about what they had been paying while they were under 61A, and then what they've been paying since the 61A expired, or whatever the term is. So, yeah, I don't know, Karen, I'll let you sort of deliver, do you have sort of a general statement of position on this, and then that'll certainly open it up to the board?
Okay, I was going to say, I don't know how much detail or not detail that you would like, but maybe I'll just throw out a few facts, and then certainly feel free to ask some questions. The property is 62.54 acres, and some of that land, in addition to that, is in Andover, approximately five acres in the back. They were under chapter 61A for some years, and that stopped, the last year was in fiscal year 14. So I think the question had become is, what's our, if, did we have a right to take that under chapter 61A, because there's a right of first refusal if it's going to be conveyed or the change in use. So that would happen if it was offered for sale at that time, or within a year of a developer purchasing that, if they changed it, that the town gets that option. And since the last time they were assessed under chapter 61A land was fiscal year 14, that's long past, so we do not have any rights to that land under chapter 61A right of first refusal. The, as far as, the, the question, I think, was the, what the use was on, what they were using it for, and under the chapter 61A, the sale or conversion could trigger the right of first refusal. However, the discontinuance of an agricultural or horticultural use shall not in of itself, for the purposes of this section, be considered a conversion. So they don't still owe us any right of first refusal on that property. I know there's been questions as to how come the value is less than what the purchase price, that's been, I have not seen any purchase price or purchase and sales agreement, however, I will say that back in 2004, the property was offered to the town, however, it seemed from the memos that I have in the records that I could find, that there was a difference of opinion as to, the town didn't feel that it was being offered correctly as the right of first refusal, because it wasn't all parties that had ownership in the property. So we did not get the, acquire the property at that time, and that was for like 5.2 million, and we didn't raise the assessed value back in those years to 5.2 million, just because there was the potential of someone may have had a plan to purchase it for that. In fiscal year 2000, or in calendar year 2008, it was offered again to the community, and they had a purchase and sales agreement for, I think it was seven and a half million. It was only offered for a short time, and then they withdrew the offer, so I don't know what happened if someone did plans, I mean, I know it's a challenging parcel, too, there's a power easement that goes through the middle of it, there's some topography issues, so I, I don't know, but the value did not get increased to seven and a half million. The assessed value today currently is seven, or for fiscal year 18, was $767,800, and it's being treated as equitably with other parcels in town. The first 60,000 square feet is considered a prime site, is considered a farmhouse, and the rest of it's valued as excess land. Those values are established annually by Vision Technologies, which is our vendor that has been doing assessments for some time. The, they have an excess land rate, and it's a straight-line method that they use on the excess land. So we are not in the business of, when it comes to assess values, of predicting, is it perkable, how many units could you get in there, could it be assisted living, if it was rezoned, could it be apartments, could it be mixed and have some commercial, some residential? We just, we don't value everyone's land in town that way, or their property, so nor would we do that on this, and it's valued consistently with others. So I would never get to a $7 million, $8 million, $9 million value based upon what its current use is. If zoning changes and there's other, annually, would we look at that? Then, you know, that's, that's a different story, depending what's used there, but I can't project in a crystal ball, well, hey, somebody could do this, let's value it at that, because I would have an appellate tax board case on my hand and I would lose. So I don't want to put the town in a position where I inflate a value because you think there's an offer on the table, and then I end up in court trying to defend a value that I don't have information to defend it on. The fiscal year 18, fiscal year 15 through 18, it's been at the full market value, there is a rollback tax, five-year lookback, so depending upon if and when it is converted, then, and we're still in that timeframe, there may be one year that we could potentially have as a rollback tax. And again, that last fiscal year that it was in chapter 61A, there was only five acres, so the rollback tax would be like $780. So it was only for that portion, and the town would have only had the right on that portion, the right of first refusal. So I'm not sure if that, if that helps answer some of the questions that you've had.
I'm sure there's more, yes, I just want to make sure I'm getting to everyone. Mike, please.
Just a couple of points I want to make, no, I get it, and you're absolutely correct, and the manager was right, I get it, one house, one lot, I know there's 62.5 acres, but I get it, one house, one lot, and the government is not looking to come into someone's neighborhood and steal the property. Obviously, if we did take it by eminent domain, and I'll talk about that in a second, you know, we, they've received many tax breaks, agriculture tax breaks for what, since the 80s, I believe, maybe even the 70s, all right, and I didn't say they did anything wrong. It's a good family, and I understand that. And I understand the zoning, it's our 60, so I would assume that if we did take the property, whether it was by purchase or eminent domain, we're going to pay fair market value, folks, we're going to pay probably 30, 40 house lots, whatever it is, I got an idea in my mind what it would be, but I'm not going to disclose that right here at this moment. I've also heard rumors out there what the offer was on there, because I do know folks, too. I'm not going to say what that is either. All I'm saying is that we are going to pay fair market value, and the town manager said it would be in the millions, not going to say specifically, so we're not going to swoop down, steal these people property, and we're bad people. I mean, it gets, it happens, not all the time, but it happens to local government, state government, state government and federal government. And I got to say it again, former town manager Mike Kyra, I thought, did a good job, he put us in that position, and I love WCTV when they show that segment on 2008, where there was an offer to come to the town, but every time the town may had an opportunity, we never, we, it wasn't not us, we did not act on it, it was always withdrawn by them, not by us, never gave, so we did have an opportunity, hopefully, to buy it, but it's not our fault, it was withdrew by them, not us. And I say it again, I go to this here, on the front page, we have the board assesses, it's their signature, acknowledging the agricultural tax lien. And once again, I go to this page here, where the Sharapa family signed this paper on this sheet here, excuse me, municipal option to purchase, and I know I read it before, and I'll say it again, a couple lines. "I understand that the city of town has an option to purchase any classified land whenever I plan to sell, convey to a residential, commercial, or industrial use during the fiscal year it is classified, or within one full year of fiscal year after it's removed from classification. I must notify and certify mail or hand delivery the mayor, the city council, or the selectman, comma, assessor's office, planning board, comma, or the conservation commission." All I'm saying is, we were never notified of that. It's not like it never happened. When town manager Mike Kyra was here, it happened, but they withdrew it, and if we had an opportunity to buy it, we would have bought that, and somehow, something fell through the cracks. I said it before, and I'll say it again, something happened, I don't know what happened, I can't look into the future or back, but we should have had first dibs on that, and it didn't happen. That's the bottom line. I mean, I'll take that to the grave, that's how I feel, but we should have had first dibs on that, and that never, never happened. And, and I, and I don't make this stuff, Mike Kyra put us in a great position to buy that, had been on this board a long time, and that did not happen, and it was withdrew from them, not us. That's what's happened. And if we had an opportunity in 2014, if we were notified, that's the bottom line, we weren't notified of that, if we were notified, I would have jumped on that immediately to buy it, and that didn't happen.
In 2014?
Well, you're saying they came to take it out of the classification of that.
No, I said the last time that they were assessed as chapter land was fiscal year 14.
When they chose to go out of 61A, we should have been notified, and that didn't happen.
So somebody can be under chapter 61A, 61B, or 61, and if they decide, so you can, you can have a farm, and you can decide to come out of that but still continue the same use, and that's not considered a change in use, and the town gets the right of first refusal when there's a sale or a change in use. So it hasn't changed its use, because the, it hasn't been turned into a development, it hasn't changed into commercial, it hasn't been rezoned, so we get the right of first refusal when there's a change in use or a sale to be proposed. So the two sales were in fiscal, were in calendar year 2004, when the memos that I've seen went back and forth, that only half of the party that has ownership was proposing the intent to sell, and the other half was not, so the town's position was, it's not a bona fide offer to us, because we don't have both parties in agreement that you're selling the property and that you're giving us the right of first refusal. So in, in 2008, we were given the notice of intent that they were going to sell, and that there would be a change in use, however, the, it was only out there for like, it was in February of 2008, it was only for like a two-week period of time, and then they withdrew the offer and said that, that they changed and they weren't selling it. So we weren't, in fiscal year 14, they're entitled, under chapter 61A, to just continue the use but stop applying to be under, and I can't do, that doesn't constitute a change in use for us to have a right of first refusal, it just changes that I put it at fair market value.
Something's just not right. I hear what you're saying, but I just can't buy, buy 100%. I hear what you're saying, but I just can't buy, buy a hundred percent of what's going on here. I just can't, you know? That's all. Thank you.
The way I interpret it, uh, so, maybe I should just shut up. I'm not good at that though. The way I interpret it is there was no offer to have a first right of refusal against. Now, I know you mentioned there's two circumstances. Um, one is while they are under sixty-one A or for a year after the sixty-one A expires, um, one is they changed the use of the, of the property, which they haven't done and still haven't done today. Um, or they go into a contract with, with a party to, who wants to purchase that property, which in two thousand and fourteen and I guess through fiscal fifteen, there was no offer to them by another party or anyone else for that matter to purchase the property. So, there was no first right of refusal that we could exercise. Am I right?
Correct. Right, correct. Because under section fourteen of chapter sixty-one A, it says, "Land taxed under this chapter shall not be sold or converted to residential, industrial or commercial use while tax so or within the first year after that time unless the city or town in which the land is located has been notified of the intent to sell or to convert to that other use. The discontinuance of agricultural or horticultural use shall not in of itself, for the purposes of the sec, of this section, be considered a conversion." So, in two thousand and fourteen, when we last taxed him for that, in fifteen, um, they didn't offer. There was no sale. There was no conversion. They just stopped the, they stopped applying to be under that use, but they could continue using the property for what they wanted to. There's a five-year lookback period for rollback tax when it is converted. So, we're on the cusp of that now, that we would possibly have one year's rollback tax because they still had the benefit of that. There's a five-year lookback if in fiscal year nineteen, eighteen, before the end of the fiscal year, that they changed it. But back then, there was nothing that I made aware of, that there was no sale, there was no conversion, there was no shovel in the ground to start building anything. They just continued doing what they were doing with it.
Were they supposed to notify someone in the town if they go out of that designation? I'm just going by what Mr. McCoy just read, that notification was supposed to be sent. Uh, you know?
So, the, the notification is sent if you are selling or converting the property. You as the property owner can do what, whatever you want to do. They don't have to, if, if they didn't sell it or they're not converting it, there's no requirement for them to notify us.
To that point though, also, okay, I think there may be a bit of a misunderstanding here. There seems to be some sense that, that they are obligated to notify the board of selectmen or others if they intend to no longer apply for the sixty-one A status.
So, applications to the board of assessors are not a public record, that, because there's income information on there, um, there's income tax information that's supposed to be submitted with it, et cetera. So, that's not something that's, um, a public record that you can, that's shared. That's why they have to provide a notice to you if they intend to sell or convert the use. So, there was, there was no notification of that.
But the act of simply not reapplying does not legally require them to notify anybody?
You can, if you, if we, if you, if you applied and the application was denied for whatever the reason, because it was incomplete or something like that, it's still not a notice of conversion or a notice of sale. And those are the two requirements that they would have to notice, notify the town for the right of first refusal.
Mr. La.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, Karen, I'm more confused now because they haven't changed the use of the property that we're aware of. So, we have since learned several weeks, a month ago, that we, that they are, they have a, a potential agreement to sell the property. So, why wouldn't that trigger them to contact us? Or make, because you said-
Because they're not under chapter sixty-one A any longer.
I understand that, but you, you said a few minutes ago that they don't have to be under chapter sixty-one and keep using the property the same way.
They can.
So, so, it's the sixty-one A that triggers the, the hundred and twenty days or?
Right, right. So, if they were getting a tax break by being under chapter sixty-one A, then, and they want, and they take it out in the middle of that fiscal year, they have a, they have a purchase, somebody's going to purchase it, or they're going to convert it, then that's when you have the right to be notified in the right of first refusal, like they did in two thousand and eight, in two thousand and four because they were under chapter land. So, they are not under chapter sixty-one A now. So, because the fact that they're going to sell it, you can have a farm and farm it and you can go sell it. We don't get the right because you didn't get the benefit. You don't have the benefit. You're not under sixty-one A. So, he's hasn't, that, that property hasn't been under sixty-one A that, so this year or, or last year, so with that one-year lookback process, it hasn't been under sixty-one A in getting that benefit to have to be, to have to comply with notifying you of their intent to sell.
So, we couldn't really argue that the use hasn't changed the last four or soon to be five fiscal years. So, we can't really demand that hundred and twenty days.
So, it hasn't been changed.
But they're only being assessed for sixty-two acres, sixty-two plus acres, for seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars?
Correct. The, it's, when it's under chapter sixty-one A, your, your value is taxed at the commercial tax rate. When you're under, when it's not, your value, your value is taxed at the residential tax rate. So, when they were under commercial, under chapter sixty-one, it was the commercial rate. It's a residential farm, sing, with a, with a home and barns on it, is the way that we've valued it.
Do you have in your records what they paid in two thousand and fourteen in taxes that you could divulge source?
I don't have taxes. I only have assessed value. I don't have what the tax rate was.
Okay.
Fiscal year fourteen, the assessed value.
Which was sixty-one A?
Yeah, only five acres was under sixty-one A.
Right, I understand that, I understand that.
So, just so that we all understand, the, the tax break or value difference for fiscal year fourteen, if it had been at market value, it would have been twenty-nine thousand six hundred dollars for those five acres. And because it was under chapter sixty-one A and it was, it was considered field and crops under the schedule that's issued, um, from the state, it was valued at five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, the difference is twenty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars in value or seven hundred and eighty-two dollars in tax. So, the, the tax savings they received in that fiscal year was for the five acres. If it was at market value, it would have been twenty-nine thousand six hundred, but it was at chapter value, which was five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Were they valued at residential rate for the, the remainder of the land?
Yeah, when you say residential rate, you meaning the-
What rate were they, what rate, excuse me?
Tax rate?
What tax rate were they given for the remainder of the?
Residential. So, anything that's a dwelling unit is at the residential tax rate. Apartment buildings are residential.
All right, I'm talking about the sixty-two point five acres of land.
Residential tax rate.
All right, so?
The chapter was commercial tax rate.
All right, so, in two thousand and fourteen, they got a discount for five acres. The other, the other fifty-seven acres or fifty-six acres, what rate were they, was that residential?
Residential.
So, then in two thousand and eighteen, we, we, we assessed them at one house and one sixty thousand square foot lot, and then the, the rest was excess land.
Excess residential land. They're both, both years. It's, it was the same. So, that, all that excess land has always been considered residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll bite on the question that was asked from the, I said, I'll bite on the question that was asked from the audience. Is the, the change of use from commercial to residential, does that constitute a notification?
So, this was, according to, constitute a notification if it was classified under chapter sixty-one A. So, they can do whatever they want on that property today. If it gets rezoned to commercial, then I will be assessing it at the commercial tax rate and whatever the use of the property is at that time. But in order for us to be notified, is that, I'm sorry, was that the question?
Correct.
So, if it's, if it's sold or converted to a residential, meaning like in subdivision, industrial or commercial use, then that would be considered, um, a change in use. And I can tell you, so, if you sell it to a developer and say, "I'm not changing the use. I'm keeping it the way it is." And within one year's time, the developer changes it to a residential subdivision, apartments, condos, industrial, um, or mixed use or commercial use, at that point, then, within that one year, they still need to notify us. So, in fiscal year fourteen, when that happened, and actually fiscal year fourteen, they needed to apply to us in two thousand and twelve for that status, for fiscal year fourteen. But in, in fiscal year fourteen, if they had changed it to residential, commercial or industrial use, they would have had to notify us. Or within one year of that time, if it was going to be sold or converted to any of those uses, they would have had to notify us. They, they didn't.
I, they didn't notify us, but, but it did change.
Because there was no change in use. There was not a residential subdivision put there. There wasn't apartment buildings put there. There wasn't an assisted living building put there. There was no zoning change put there. There's, they didn't get perks. That would have changed it to say, "Look, now there's all these buildable lots." So, nothing changed that they would have notified us.
But the assessment changed. The assessment changed from commercial to residential.
Well, because chapter sixty-one A land has to be taxed at the commercial tax rate, not at the commercial value. So, it's valued as residential, but they pay at the commercial tax rate. So, since Wilmington has a split tax rate, they would be paying the commercial tax rate on that value. But the value's not established using a commercial, uh, land schedule that you would be valuing commercial land, like where Market Basket is. It's not, that's not the intention. What it says is you value it as residential. They get the discount for the chapter value. That chapter value is taxed at the commercial tax rate. So, they'd be paying the thirty-three dollars per thousand on that land value as opposed to the residential fourteen dollars and some, on that, on that portion of the land.
So, in fourteen, that was switched from thirty-three dollars to fourteen?
Uh, this, so, in fourteen, they paid at the commercial tax rate. In fifteen was the year that it came out and they paid at the residential tax rate, fifteen forward.
And that doesn't justify a change in use?
Um, so, yeah, okay, so I, I see where you're going.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So, the, no, so, the use never changed. The house, the land, everything has stayed the same. Under the provisions of chapter sixty-one A, that value, if the whole thing was under, whatever we establish for a value based upon how it's being used as a farm, they pay at the commercial tax rate. It's just a provision of the, of the chapter sixty-one A, sixty-one B and sixty-one law. They always pay at the commercial tax rate. The tax rate does not mean it's being used commercially. It's just that, that's the provision that they pay. Some towns don't have a split tax rate, so they're still paying the same rate. They have a single rate. So, the use didn't change. Wasn't being used commercially. It's just they were paying the commercial tax rate because that's what chapter sixty-one A says, which rate they pay. I don't know, that didn't-
I, I just, when it, when something changes from commercial to residential, I see it as a change in use.
So, I can just come back to the conversion, yeah.
My thought process on that.
The conversion to residential, industrial or commercial use. So, there's no commercial building there. There wasn't a new business built there. There wasn't an industrial park put in there. There was an apartment building, assisted living, condos, a new residential subdivision. So, it never converted to any of that. So, there's-
Even though it was being assessed and billed for that.
No, it wasn't being assessed for that. It was being assessed as a farm and just residential house in residential vacant land, but they have to pay because of chapter sixty-one A, the commercial tax rate.
Okay.
So, there's a commercial rate and there's a commercial way you value property. So, we're not valuing it as a commercial entity like, like a strip mall. It's just that they have to pay the commercial rate when you're under chapter land. But it was still being valued as a residential schedule that's across the board. Even our chapter lands today, that's how they're treated.
Mr. Chairman, if I could. I know there's some folks in the audience, and not only this, I'm sure there's some folks showing interest even to Article Two that I can see, and that, and I'm happy for that. Uh, we got some folks in the audience. Can we go to some audience participation relative to this? Because this is something that's important that's going to be going forward.
Uh, yeah. Let me make sure we're, we're exhausted here at the, at the table here. Is there anybody?
No, that was good.
I think I'm getting it.
Craig, anything? Ed, more?
I'm all set. Thank you, Karen.
Um, yeah, I, so, yeah, I, I'm confident. I know some of the folks have been coming to these meetings and I, I'd, I'd like to try to keep the conversation relative to what we're talking about here, if it's at all possible. So, Mr. McDonald?
Yes, uh, it's pretty obvious, after listening to, um, you elected officials up there, that it doesn't seem like any of you afforded yourself the opportunity to actually go on the computer and read Mass General Law's sixty-one A. So, I'd like to encourage you all to do that so that your questions are obvious, um, to that chapter and that you can show that yourselves, show yourselves that, um-
Mr. McDonald, rather than being critical, if you have a question, please articulate the question. We're not, we're not going to let you just, just lambaste us here because you have a camera on.
I'm just, I'm just offering that advice to, for you guys to know.
Thank you. Your advice is duly noted. Do you have a question for someone here at the board?
Yeah. Mr. Hall mentioned that he was going to contact the family about, um, their desire to sell it to the town. Number one, I was wondering if the town manager did that. And number two, um, it's my understanding that if somebody has a contract to sell their property and they start negotiating with somebody else that's not involved in that contract, that they could be opening, opening themselves up to liability. And I just find it perplexing to think that the manager would think that a party that's represented by an attorney would, um, violate that contract and start a negotiation or a conversation, uh, with a third party that's not involved in that contract. So, maybe the town manager can speak on that. I have some other comments, but I don't want to convolute this question.
You're welcome to the- So, the, the first question was, have I contacted the attorneys representing the Sharapas? And the answer is yes. Uh, I am, I expecting to hear back from, uh, I've heard back from one attorney, expecting to hear back from the other, uh, but I have not to this point. With regard to, um, the question of, uh, creating some kind of, uh, legal infraction by attempting to insert myself into a, a contract, I'm, I'm not aware whether there is or is not a contract to purchase at this point. But, um, since I have not had any substantive conversations with either attorney about this property, that I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm guessing that because those attorneys did not talk to you and having watched television and social media, knowing that the town had a desire to talk to them to buy the property, most likely the reason why those attorneys didn't contact you is because it's in a contract. And the family most likely will not want to be, uh, subjecting themselves to a lawsuit by negotiating with somebody else while they have a contract with somebody else. So, that's, that's my point there. The other point that I wanted to make was, I think it was back in the seventies, there was a piece of property that was taken by eminent domain. It was on Salem Street. And I thought I can recall hearing, um, some legal advice that simply stated that when you take a piece of property by eminent domain, you have to have a specific reason for taking that property. And if I can recall properly, that the property on Salem Street was taken for the purpose of building a school. And so, nothing has happened to that Salem Street property. However, because it was taken for a school, if I'm not mistaken, that there's a problem now with being able to use that for another use, seeing as though it was taken for, um, by eminent domain for that purpose. So, getting back to this particular, um, issue with the Sharapa farm, if the town is not taking this for a specific use or they are taking it for a specific use such as open space, um, what have the town attorneys advised you, Mr. Hall, about a situation such as this with regard to eminent domain?
I think the, uh, points that they have raised are that, uh, the town, uh, has to be mindful of not, uh, taking, if, if there is an intent to take the property, uh, there is case law that addresses, um, communities that are taking property with the intent to thwart, uh- communities that are taking property with the intent to thwart development of affordable housing, and the town has to be mindful of that.
Can you elaborate on the case law, how that impacts the town, what it limits the town?
I think it's just, I'm not going to go into all the details, but that's essentially the town, just, there is case law that, in another community where they attempted to take a piece of property that was slated for affordable housing, and the Supreme Judicial Court ruled that taking null and void.
The last point that I wanted to make on this was, Mr. Loud, at the last meeting, opposed any taking of the Sharapa Farm, because he didn't think that people should be taking other people's property by eminent domain. However, the town has been in the process of taxing money, putting money into a fund for the hockey rink. And the way that that article was written, it was written to also take that by eminent domain. And so, my concern is, how do you keep consistent with your philosophy if you're for eminent domain on one thing, but you're against eminent domain on another thing, when it involves taking somebody's property by eminent domain?
Mr. Chairman, since my name was mentioned, I did not vote for the rink, I wasn't at that town meeting, so...
Okay. Are you against taking the hockey rink by eminent domain?
I gotta read about it before I can say yes or no. But we haven't done, we haven't taken it by eminent domain, so...
Yeah, but we're putting a ton of money into enterprise fund.
Karen, I'm just going to correct the record, actually, I'll let the town, not a dollar has been put aside for an enterprise fund.
There has not been one dollar put into a fund for the purchase of the rink. What has happened at successive annual town meetings since the board first received the authorization to purchase the property for up to two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You'll recall that one of the elements of that was the establishment of an enterprise account, so that the money generated from the business of hockey would go back into the care and upkeep of the facility. So there was an amount that has been established and continues to be used from year to year that sets the upper cap as to how much money that would be generated from the sale of ice time and other fees could go into that account. So all it does is essentially set a limit as to how much could go into this enterprise fund. There has not been any appropriation for the rink.
Yes, Ms. Ella.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to touch base quickly on the eminent domain and do you need a specific use, I would refer everybody to the annual report nineteen ninety-eight, I actually dug mine out when we took the Wirewood, sad enough, I actually had it. And when we bought the Wirewood property for the ball field, which is now there, and in that article, in the discussions at town meeting, it talks about, there wasn't a specific use for that land, and the town did take that land by eminent domain. So I would refer people to that annual report nineteen ninety-eight. And as far as the commercial use is for the Sharapas Farm, I would say that farms are a commercial entity. They sell a very important product, which is food, and that's why they're taxed under the commercial rate. So it's not like the farm was some kind of residential rate use, it was actually a commercial use, that's what farms do. So I just want to clarify that from my point of view. And then when they came out in two thousand and fourteen, now they were being taxed as residential, rightfully so, I guess. So there is a change of use there. Just want to put that, no longer, you know, the agricultural use, if you're not taxing them as a commercial use anymore, because they're not farming and they didn't meet the criteria for sixty-one A, then, I don't know, I didn't see the application, so I don't really know. But I would just want to put that out there. And I just also want to say that, once again, what came first, the chicken or the egg, doesn't concern me so much, I do feel like the ball was dropped. If this came out of sixty-one A in two thousand and fourteen, I really would have hoped that somebody would have notified somebody, said, hey, this is one of the biggest parcels in town, the only farm that we have left, and it just came out of chapter sixty-one A, you know, and I know the town's been interested in buying it, you know, in the past, it would have been nice if we would have been notified in the public. But now, that's all water under the bridge, and now we have the opportunity to correct what was wrong. And so what came first, the chicken or the egg, is not so important to me. What's really important to me is that we buy this for the future of the town. Thank you very much.
I'm agreeing with you.
Is there someone else, sir, did you ask? Please.
Yeah, I just had some questions about assessing, I see some inconsistencies. First of all, I went back a few years and compared to the appraised value, according to vision appraisal versus the assessed, and the last year was substantial difference was two thousand and thirteen, where the appraised value was five eighty-one, four hundred, and the assessed was one ninety-five, two hundred. But that's basically about a two-thirds discount. And let me just state, first and foremost, I'm not in the business of trying to tell people they're not paying enough taxes. I mean, a working farm, if they paid zero, I'd be for that. So, and I'll explain in a minute why I'm even doing this. So anyway, back then, according to the recorded tax lien, they requested five acres to be farmed, and they didn't mention the rest. So out of fifty-six acres of excess land, not including the initial sixty thousand, five acres, that's about less than ten percent, yet the tax rate was sixty-six, sixty-seven percent, two-thirds. So how does that happen if they're only requesting five acres to be in sixty-one A? What happens to the other fifty-six?
You asked, you asked me the question.
Someone?
Okay. So, if you, I wasn't here then, and the fiscal year thirteen application date would have been in calendar year two thousand and eleven. So, all I can go by is the records that you have as well, that if you have the property record card?
I have the record card, it shows the current. I had to go, they don't have, I asked the assessor if they had, if I could print out old records, which she said no. All I could do was take the numbers of the years.
So when I got here, we never archived property record cards. So there were none in the system to be able to do that. And fiscal year thirteen was a reval year, and that was the same year that the high school project, that exclusion hit. So I was scrambling, trying to find, how do we get our hands on what it was to what it is now? The fiscal year thirteen, I think there was more acreage under than the five acres, and that was where there was a discrepancy. So in fiscal year fourteen, it was put to just the five acres being under, and not more than the five acres being under. And then in fiscal year fifteen, it came out altogether. So they can still continue to use the land the way they were using it, if I don't have an application before me, or if we deny an application saying it's incomplete, because you didn't supply us all the information, you don't challenge it, we don't go to the appellate tax board to prove it there, then they didn't request to be under chapter any longer. You can still continue, you can be a farm today, we have a large farm in town today that's being a farm, and they are not getting the benefit of chapter sixty-one A. So you can continue to do that without being valued as chapter sixty-one A land. You can have sixty acres and only say, I want to use five of it. Sometimes it had changed, there was thirty acres, five acres over the years, I mean, that's history, I wasn't here to speak to how that was established. I don't have a property record card to show me how that was handled back then. So I can just say that it came out in fiscal year fifteen, to be assessed at, without being under chapter sixty-one A. But nothing physically changed there from what they're doing, other than they're not applying to be under the chapter any longer, and they can do that. And that's not considered a change in use, it didn't convert to more residential units, it didn't convert to a commercial building, an industrial building, a mixed-use building, any of that. Back in two thousand and four, when they offered it to the town for five million dollars, the value, the assessed value didn't get changed to five million dollars. When they offered it in two thousand and eight for seven and a half million dollars, it wasn't changed to seven million dollars, so I don't know if that's answered your question.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Another question I had was, is it the town of Wilmington's policy not to differentiate between residential developable land, residential potential developable land, and undevelopable land? Because most towns do distinguish. And it would be based on the current zoning, or what could be done, unless it's an actual wetland, which this isn't, it's about two-thirds of the groundwater protection, which is different, I understand it's a certain, it can still be built. But based on that, and to me, again, I'm not trying to tell anyone they should be paying more taxes, but I don't see how you don't even consider the potential development of the site.
So I guess the question, I did talk to Vision Technologies as well about this, and the town has been certified, their values have been certified by the Department of Revenue every three years, and this would be part of that package. We can't just pick, we can't project what we think could be there, that you could potentially put a road in, or you could move that easement so that it allows for an apartment building in the middle, or for condo units. We can't, the assessors, it's kind of like, we're after the fact, it goes through planning board, and it gets recorded at the registry of deeds, and then we assess what's there.
But there are state use codes that differentiate.
So the state use codes, a one thirty, or this here is a one oh one, which is a single-family use. And I think what you're referring to is, when it's vacant land, it would be a one thirty, which is potentially, that's a buildable lot. One thirty-one is potentially buildable, one thirty-two is it's unbuildable. Usually, you have to look at sales of property that is unbuildable, and sales that are potentially, and then those, it would be classified, there would be a discount given. So Vision has done their, over the years, they take out their prime site, and the rest is considered excess land. If it was unbuildable excess land, there would probably be a discount off of that value, to say it was an unbuildable rate. So if you have a house lot that's said it meets the criteria for a house lot, and it's unbuildable, it's usually about a ninety percent discount off of that, because it's unbuildable land. I've seen some of those around town. So that is, and it's on a state use code, and the value is adjusted accordingly. I worked in another community, we had ninety parcels of chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A and sixty-one B land, and if you had frontage on a street, and you had a bunch of four main lots, the Department of Revenue would not approve our values if we tried to tax that, as this is potential what they could do there. Unless you had sales of other properties that you could show there was extra value, and then they didn't, they pushed back really hard on trying for us to do that. We had an appellate tax board hearing, one of the other farm in town, and I'll tell you that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts looks very strongly upon favoring any farms, because there are so few of them left. And in keeping with the nature of trying to preserve it, they are, we disagreed that it was chapter land, this particular one, because we said it was a commercial processing facility, and they're saying, no, it's not. So we're still, that's still in a court, so I can't speak any more to that.
Okay, thank you. Frank, after you, Frank, I'm sorry, sir in the back, and then Frank.
Okay. I just, from reading sixty-one A and B, so I'm not sure which one, I've read this in, but I thought it was a ten-year rollback, but it diminishes in the amount of percentage based on the year.
You're absolutely right. There's two different things when it comes to a rollback tax. One is it's a two-step test, one is a conveyance tax, and one is rollback. So the conveyance tax is if there was a sale price within the last ten years to use as the calculation, and it would diminish that one percent a year. So if you had a, let's say if they had just acquired the property five years ago, I could look at the conveyance tax, if they're selling it for seven million dollars, what's higher, the conveyance tax or the rollback? Whichever's the higher is the one we get. But since there is no sale price, and this has been in the family for years, I don't have a sale price to go by within the last ten years. Yes.
Mr. West?
Hi, Frank West, Two Vertwood Road. Couple of quick comments. One, when you were talking about eminent domain properties at my last selectives meeting, I believe that the Hardin Tavern was also a eminent domain taking, and if my memory serves correct, that was the first time that a property had been taken in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for historic preservation. And we've successfully used the tavern property, I think, over the past thirty, forty years. So I do have a question, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Mr. Morris. Regarding taking money out of, when you were talking earlier about taking money out of free cash, and putting it into like a stabilization account or an enterprise account, not really quote spending the money, just for lack of a better term, putting it from one savings account being free cash, to another savings account called capitalization. Does the, when bond raters look at, giving us a bond rating, do they look at that, you know, money that's set aside, not necessarily in quote free cash, but in a specific account?
Yes, they will look at all your reserves, and what they're dedicated to.
So when you were talking earlier about wanting about fifteen percent-ish, or something like that, they would look at the free cash, and then they would look at any stabilization or enterprise type accounts?
They would look at it in two different ways. They would look at free cash standalone, and they would look at the total reserves of the town. So they would look at it in two different lights. And the fifteen percent I was referring to was specific to free cash. They look for liquidity, and free cash is more liquid than capital stabilization.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. McDonald, just one more closing, if that's okay, please.
Okay. In the past, I've spoke a little bit about the families in town that are being forced out of town. You drive around town, and you see a lot of real estate signs on houses that are, people have been living in here for quite a few years. These people have children, they're in school, these children bond with other children, make friends, they play sports, and they develop relationships with teammates, and then they find their families having to move out of town, and I find that traumatic to a child. Having said that, my concern is the impact on families that have fixed incomes when it comes to raising their taxes. We were told...
I'm going to ask you to try to make a connection here, pretty quickly, to what we're talking about with regards to financing the three thirty-three...
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to try to make all my comments relative to that, and since it could involve taxation, that's the reason for my comments, and the impact on families. For example, when they were talking about building a new high school, there were forms that were held, and we were told that the taxes were only going to go up a hundred and sixty-four dollars. And pretty much everybody that I talked to believes that was deceitful. So, listening to Mr. Hall talk tonight, he mentioned also that we have a seventy-eight million dollar pension debt. So, two questions. One for you, Mr. Shapu, do you intend on bringing forth any type of agenda item to deal with helping families from being forced out of town? And if Mr. Hall can speak to us a little bit about the seventy-eight million, the seventy-eight million dollar pension debt that we need to have retired, and more specifically, why that has to be retired? Why it's not just paid gradually, or having our commitments met throughout the years for those pensions? Why does that have to be paid off at that date?
Okay, I'll address the first question briefly, just simply to say that, no, is the answer, no. I will not be putting forth an agenda item to talk about whatever it is you just said you wanted to have it talk about. Because frankly, we do that every single day, every single minute of every day, at every meeting, that's what we do on this board, and that's what town government is in the business of doing, is providing a bench of services to every resident, everything from trash pickup to plowing, to paved roads, and schools, and buses, and everything else. We deliver a quality of life that the residents in this town, me included, have a high expectation of and deserve on a daily basis, every day. So that, you know, it wrenches my heart when young children who have developed friendships have to move to a different community because of whatever the circumstances are in their life. And I almost came to tears when you were telling your story, and certainly no one wants to ever see that happen, but it's not happening because there's any conspiracy afoot here at town hall, or... afoot here at, at Town Hall or among your elected officials. Mr. Hull, did you want to talk to whatever his second point was? You don't have to.
The pension liability is something that every municipality in the Commonwealth has to deal with. There's a schedule that is set, I believe it's, again, by the Commonwealth that establishes when various retirement boards have to retire their pension liability. A portion of our existing retirement assessment goes towards the retirement of that pension liability. I think at this point, Mike, you can jump in here, but it's something, the assessment at this point is something in the order of six or seven million dollars a year, a portion of that going towards the retirement of our pension liability. What I've been suggesting in the town meeting has been good enough to authorize this for the last few years, is that the town essentially, as, as you might do with your homeowner's loan, expedite the pay down or the retirement of that debt by paying an additional amount towards the pension liability. That's point one, and then point two is that we've been putting aside funding in this retirement stabilization account. We are in a very, and I know this isn't across the board for, for everybody, but for a large segment of the population, the times are in a better place than they were a number of years ago. The town is in a better place financially, but that isn't always going to be the case. And we've seen times, certainly in the late 2000s, '07, '08, '09, where the town revenues were decreasing, state aid was decreasing, and that's what I'm trying to look out for. Things aren't going to be always as good as they are for many right now. And so by putting money aside in these accounts, when that next cycle happens, and it will happen, whether it's in two years or five years, and state aid is cut, and motor vehicle excise isn't coming in the way it should, meals tax isn't coming in the way it should, and our revenues start to decline, I want to be in a position to take some of that money that's been salted away and meet our obligations with, in this case, respect to retirement.
What was the year again that had to be retired?
2035.
2035. I just, I just find it a little bit hard to see how that could be retired when you're giving department heads some whopping pay raises. Like, we've had a guy get a pay raise of $27,000 a few years ago. We saw, I think it was last year or the year before, a guy get a pay raise of $17,000. So how can you possibly expect to retire pension debt when you're giving whopping pay raises, whopping pay raises?
We're going to, we're going to, at some point, I gotta draw the line, and I guess I'm gonna draw it there. It's as good a place as any. So, I'm sorry, Ms. Sullivan, did you have a closing comment?
One really quick question about the tax rate for what a farm would be. Is it a commercial tax rate? If it doesn't fall into Chapter 61A?
No, no.
Is it a residential tax rate?
It is.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question to the assessor. I, I heard you say earlier that you said, before you got here, the previous assessor, did he keep something, or he didn't keep something? Well, I didn't understand what you were saying.
I said our, our records, he asked for a property record card. So the, the permanent record is our commitment books, and the commitment book doesn't give the same level of detail as the property record card. So we didn't, we didn't archive the property record cards from like 1999 until, well, when I got here in 2013, there was none. So I had the IT director was able to go back a year and get 2012, but other than that, we didn't, we don't have any.
You said, when, where did you start? You said you started in 2013?
I started fiscally year 13, but at December of 2012.
All right, all right, thank you.
But there are, there are books, I'm sorry, so there's a less detailed book that has some data?
Correct, those are permanent record, the proper, the commitment books.
Okay.
So that just doesn't give the line, how it was valued, it just gives totals.
Thank you. Anybody else from up here?
Thank you.
Very well, thank you. That brings us to our scheduled eight o'clock. Boy, we were doing good there for a while. Oh, thank you, Mike, and thank you, Karen. I appreciate you guys being here this evening.
Thank you.
And enlightening us all. So we did schedule an eight o'clock meeting among us, the board, with, along the subject of economic development, or an economic development committee. As many who pay attention to these meetings will probably recognize or remember, this is not a new subject. It's not suddenly coming onto the forefront for discussion or for consideration. Certainly something that I have been mindful of and sort of beating the drum on for, for just some period of time, I guess, I know that, and speaking with Jeff over the course of the last couple of years, as we lead into town meeting preparations, he will often ask, you know, what are some areas of interest or areas of concern, or things that, that each of us as members of the board have as sort of priorities or focus. And this has been, for me, one that, that has been a constant, that I've had an area of interest in, an area that I believe is important to focus on. But it was, I will, I will admit to you that this discussion came mostly because Mr. Bendel had reached out to me, I guess, last week or early this week, I'm sorry, early last week, really just asking that we could open up a conversation here this evening. And so Greg, if it's all right with you, I'm gonna sort of lob it back at you, and you can sort of help start or prime the pump on the conversation, and we'll see where it sort of takes us, if that's okay.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you adding us to the agenda tonight, and I appreciate your comments there, obviously prefacing the conversation. And I think you alluded to it earlier in your well-written report that you read to us, that this isn't something new, this isn't something I've come up with, this is certainly a conversation that's been had amongst this board, previous boards, and certainly the town administration. So I'm glad that we can have this, and really, my hope from tonight is that we can just start the conversation, and hopefully, in the near future, it can perhaps come to fruition. And whatever that committee, board, task force, coalition, whatever you want to call it, can happen in the near future. And I just want to point out that not only have I had conversations with you about this, who I know has done extensive research, particularly in the surrounding communities, some of the same communities that I've looked at in terms of Tewksbury, Redding, certainly what's, what goes on in Boricca, and some of our neighboring communities, and so I appreciate the advice you gave me. But I also had some great conversations with the town manager and, and the planning director, who was very helpful and answered, she answered a lot of my questions. And so I really, my hope is that we can take a proactive approach and perhaps put together in the near future, I'll call it a committee, I'll call it a task force, actually, that in my mind is made up of town officials, including whether it's the town manager, the assistant town manager, the planning director, perhaps a designated from this board, and certainly members of our community. So, you know, I would envision, we have a really active Chamber of Commerce, Tewksbury-Womans Chamber of Commerce, which are very active, and they do a great job. We have a tremendous amount of small business owners here in town that have been very successful and integral parts of our community, and then obviously residents, who I think, you know, a lot have showed interest in something like this going forward, and certainly have a lot of good ideas. So I would hope that perhaps in the near future, however it's assembled, we could organize a group that could start to take a look at not only best practices of our neighboring communities, but what things can we avail ourselves to, such as the North Suburban Planning Council, which is available to us, which is, you know, similar to what goes on at the Middlesex III, if you're familiar, what goes on in Boricca and Bedford, that area, along Route, Route 3. But again, I think we all have said it at one point or another, we drive down the road, and we notice some retail spaces that are open, and we think to ourselves, man, I wish we could get such and such there. And one of them, actually, that's most common, I think, talked about, people ask me, hey, Greg, what's gonna happen with Chili's, you know? And I was surprised to find out in my research, yeah, sure, I'd love to have something go there too, but I was surprised to learn that in order for a restaurant to go where the existing restaurant, where Chili's was, that they need a special permit. And so I didn't know if that's something that perhaps a committee could look at, is that something that's perhaps preventing a business from coming in? That's perhaps something that we could, that have this group take a look at. And the reason I bring it up now is I think it makes perfect sense to start assembling a group like this, because in July, our Planning Board is going to be putting a market analysis study of a section of Route 38 together, and we'll need folks to take a look at that data in terms of what we think will be best there. I think the ultimate goal is here, is try to put some more businesses in the spots that are empty, and I think we can all agree that it would be beneficial for all the residents, because if we can continue to have a strong commercial tax base, it's gonna reap benefits for the residents who are bearing the rest of the burden of the tax. So I offer that tonight as just a pointed conversation. I certainly wouldn't ask for a vote here tonight, I'm just dropping this on you, so I want to give you time to think it over and talk to folks, but I hope that it can be on a future board to consider item, and certainly welcome any other thoughts and discussion.
Thank you, Greg. Thanks again for sort of putting it on the radar screen now. I think it's, in my view, it's prudent to have these conversations now and be proactively thinking about it, rather than reactively assembling, you know, like you say, a task force or a coalition or whatever, that, that would look at that data. So the data will be gathered over the course of the summer and be available for review, and, and then I guess the idea is review by whom, right? Certainly, the town management and staff would be a part of that, but this, this organization, this group, whatever it's called, this committee, we'll use that term tonight, would, it would be logical for them to be already structured and to have maybe some, some guidelines or a mission statement, or at least have a, a structure in place so that they can hit the ground running once that data becomes available.
And if I could just add two examples of that's already going on, we have a substance abuse coalition that works closely with the town administration, that's made up of town officials and residents, and they've done a lot of great work working with the town administration. And also, we have the currently, the bylaw committee going on with the members of this board, Mr. McCoy specifically, and then residents made up, and so they're giving us great input. So I would envision this task force committee, whatever you want to call it, to do similar, similar work. Would be great input from the residents, along with the recommendations from the town administration.
Thank you, Greg. Yes, Mr. Love?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for bringing this forward, and Greg, speaking on it. Yeah, definitely, definitely, I think this task force, we definitely need some type of economic development. And I think we need to look at the bylaws and the permitting process for those, and we've talked about it in the past about streamlining permitting process, not only locally, the state, and nationally. It's something that deters people from trying to come into town. But I definitely think an economic development committee, coalition, whatever his name is needed. And if I'm not part of that, I will stay close to it, because it's definitely needed. And one thing I'd like to throw out there, and it, it is changing the bylaw for our highway district, our height restriction is 40 feet. When I first got on the board, I talked to Chief McClellan and asked him how high he could go on a highway district only, and that, I'm talking along Balladvale and, and drawing a blank where the Forbes Road, Ford Road, those type of roads where we're, where we have highway district, to possibly raise that height limit from 40 feet to maybe 100 feet. And the chief said he was equipped to, to be able to do that at a time. I haven't talked to the current chief, but that, that's just one way. You look at our neighboring town of Burlington, you go up and down the highways, and they've got very tall buildings. So if we restricted it to just that one district, that's one bylaw that we, we can look at to possibly change to grow economic development, because we're raising the commercial tax value of those properties, and potential redevelopment of those properties, and lessen the burden on us residents. So that's just one way to look at it, and I commend the chairman and Greg for bringing this up, and, and we definitely, definitely need to think about economic development. Some of our towns have their own economic development person that works for the town. So in the future, we need to come up with something. So I, I'm all, all on board, and I'm gonna be staying close to it. So thank you both, gentlemen.
Thank you. And, you know, I want to, and I appreciate, that's the kind of brainstorming that I think a committee would, would, you know, would flush out, whether, you know, whether it's 100 feet or 80 feet, or, or any feet at all for that matter. But having those conversations are fruitful, and, you know, then, but I, but I want to, I guess, make sure, people might be hearing this and going, this economic development committee is gonna start changing the, the look and feel of our town. And that would not be the case, right? So the, the process.
Not my decision, it's everyone's decision.
That's right. The process would still have to follow the way any zoning change would change, would have an at-town meeting.
Absolutely.
And, and would go through the full vetting process. This committee is really just intended, I think, Greg, if you agree, is really just to be a, a focus point for what are the ways that the town can be more proactive instead of reactive, right? So we've got a number of, we, I talked about them, some vacancies, you mentioned a few, some vacancies that are just eye-catching along Main Street. But there are also the less eye-catching vacancies that are up at the Balladvale area and down Forbes Road, et cetera, that have opportunity for, maybe not retail, but there are opportunity for businesses to come to Wilmington, to be job providers in Wilmington, and more importantly, to be taxpayers in Wilmington. And that, that feeds us all, right? So I think you alluded to it, a very healthy commercial base in our community really feeds our tax base dramatically, because we are a dual-shift tax community, and we do tax those businesses at a higher rate. And in spite of that, businesses that are here very much enjoy being here. So we really need to put our best foot forward. I think it's a marketing message, frankly. We, we know, all of us here and that are listening to my voice, we already know how awesome our town is, we just have the challenge now of getting that word out to the right people. And what I get frustrated sometimes about is that the, the general population, the residents in town will say, why doesn't the town go get Whole Foods? You know? And, because this notion that, I think, on the part of some of the residents, that the town should be out getting Whole Foods, or getting, you know, Trader Joe's, or whatever, and that's really certainly not the town's, it's a free-market economy, right? So we hope that Whole Foods and that Trader Joe's will find us and recognize how awesome we are, but we aren't in the business of going out and getting Whole Foods and Trader Joe's. Well, maybe we could be a little bit, you know? Maybe that's, maybe that's an activity that the Economic Development Committee could be a part of, as being, and working in collaboration with the Middlesex III, or some of the other regional associations, working in collaboration with the Chambers of Commerce, and, and really just trying to construct a, a way of communicating the awesomeness of Wilmington to the greater business community, trying to fill some of those vacancies, and then really improve the quality of life to our residents. So that's where my mind goes on this subject. I don't know, Kevin or Mike, I certainly want to, I didn't mean to dominate the conversation.
I'll just say something real quick. I'm not saying this is something new, but it's something to explore. I remember years and years ago, we did have economic development relative to Balladvale Street. It was the tri-town, it was Wilmington, Tewksbury, and Andover, and we even had the Federal Secretary of Transportation, I think it was under the Bush era, I could be mistaken, that came out to that area, and with the assistance of the federal government, we were able to help put the interchange relative, quickly in near the target area, so we could utilize Balladvale Street, where there was economic development there. So I can understand us looking, but we gotta be mindful of what we do this. I don't think we need like 20-story buildings, but, you know, but we need to take a look mindful to see how we can do it in orderly way, and, you know, we can look at it.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, that was a good point to bring up, you know, no one's looking to increase traffic or increase density, or increase the strain on the existing people here. What we're really trying to do is improve the quality of life, fill some of these vacancies, and, and, you know, and increase the tax rolls.
No, I mean, worth exploring and looking at, but, you know, people owned the, the buildings over in that area, Chili's you mentioned, so maybe the, the person who owns the building can be the person looking to see who's gonna fill the vacancy, rather than creating another committee. But that's, or we have a development coordinator, Valerie, she can be proactive and look, a town manager can do the same. Any one of us can do it, if we want to help out the landlord to try to fill his facility, or where was it, Sonic used to be there, or if you know of someone, ask them if they want a, a place to put a hamburger joint. Do we need a committee to do that? I don't know. But.
I guess that's just the teacher and me getting together and sharing best practices, I don't.
I would just offer this, certainly one ready example of that, in my estimation, is this discussion about the tax increment financing program or agreement that is, will be coming up at town meeting. Here's an instance where we have the largest employer in town is looking to expand, which will certainly benefit us in the long run in terms of tax revenue, you know, the prospect of bringing workforce from other communities and increasing the job count, although the projection is certainly relatively low at this point, I think they're being conservative, but taking opportunities like that to pursue an agreement that in my estimation is gonna benefit both analog devices, as well as the town in the long run, I think are immediate examples of economic development.
Speaking of TIF, by the way, I hope, you know, that'll be after I'm no longer sitting at this board, but I hope you guys will take up the charge of creating some guidelines for any potential future TIF applicants, you know? We reacted, you, and I compliment you all for the way that you reacted to. you all for the way that you reacted to the analog TIF request. But be better to be in a position to be proactive and have a guideline for reacting to the next one, whoever that might be by. So, I look forward to your efforts in that regard. Any more on this subject? Awesome. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. Jeff, we could jump to communications if you don't mind, sir. We jumped over the first one, I suppose, by virtue of having had Mr. Morris already joining us.
Yes. The, the next item on the docket here is a memo to the board regarding the proposed roadway projects for 2018, essentially running from the 15th of April through 15th of November is basically the season. There's a document here that Mike Woods has provided that identifies a series of roads that are in the so-called Priority One category, including Ballard Vale. As you know, we did a large water main replacement project there that will be finishing up this year and the repaving going on there. A section of Carter Lane, Middle Sex Ave, Old Main Street, Richmond Street, Salem Street, Shawshin Ave, Shelburne Place, and Woburn Street, and different sections of these roads. I would just make note, though, that there are a number of factors that play into this. Certainly, weather conditions may limit the ability to complete some of this work. There's also the prospect that when a road project, when they begin the site prep, if there are issues, for example, with drainage that require a more extensive work than was originally anticipated, that project may be sidelined and they would go to the so-called Priority Two Tier roads. But we receive the funding through the Chapter 90, which is state funding. Mass legislature provides that every year. And as these projects get underway, there's a regular notification process that takes place. Residents in the impacted areas will receive Everbridge notices. In addition, it'll be published in the local newspaper and on the town's website.
Thank you.
Through the chair, just a question on, to Jeff. I didn't notice Lowell Street, Woburn Street, where Luchese is, and know that Textron Strip that seems to be awfully, there was some roadwork there for-
Yes, that, that's going to be done by the contractor that's responsible for doing the development there. But my expectation is that'll be done this year.
Oh, geez, I didn't see it.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, to the manager. Jeff, I assume this includes, these streets include the sidewalks as well?
Sidewalk repairs?
Correct.
The, the, just the streets, not sidewalks at this point.
So, the 90, is it, are we limited by the 90 funding? Is it written in the-
No, we can do sidewalks. My expectation that this will be primarily streets as opposed to sidewalks.
So, if we needed to go about trying to fix up a sidewalk, we would have to go a different avenue besides the 90?
No, the 90, the 90, Chapter 90 funds, sidewalks are ineligible expenditure for sidewalks, but at this point, the focus is just on the streets. We can certainly do sidewalks under Chapter 90, but they're not slated to be part of this program.
Is your, are you talking about the creation of new sidewalks in certain circumstances? Or the repair of the-
No, I just, I think Mr. Kyra alluded to some, some spots that are beaten up a little bit. There's also some areas in town where the sidewalks could use some work too. And I didn't, I just didn't know if this included the sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman, please say, I got that robo-call for Salem Street, and they actually started working on that today. They're actually doing the sidewalks for handicapped accessibility on, on all the intersections. So, on Salem Street, I can speak for that. That's what they told us, and that's what I saw out there today. So, I hope to hear that's, hope that's on all these repairs on all the other roads that we talked about.
So, I'm, I'm not anticipating full-scale replacement of sidewalks, but clearly, as Selectman Loud indicated, on Salem Street, there are areas where the sidewalks need to be modified for handicapped access, and that is what's going on there.
It's good to hear. Very well.
Thank you. We've got, we received correspondence from Margaret Hurley, who is the Assistant Attorney General. This is in response to the articles that were submitted from the town meeting on December 16th. And Articles Three and Five, actually, let me start from the very beginning, Article Two, which was the article to make modifications to the zoning bylaws to address detox centers. The Attorney General's office is essentially delaying their ruling on that and have established a new deadline of June 19th. So, they're looking to take additional time to review the merits and whether that complies with state law and the state constitution, is my understanding. The other articles, Three, Four, and Five, were all approved by the Attorney General.
Yes. Could I make commentary on that if I could, Mr. Chairman? First of all, let me just say, the Attorney General is still reviewing Article Two. I believe if the Attorney General thought it was discriminatory or negative, then the AG's office would have disapproved Article Two immediately with these other articles. But she has not. I believe this has become a political football, and I get it, relative to the national opioid epidemic. And that is why I believe the AG's office is delaying the vote, delaying their decision until June 19th of this year. And that's their right to do so. You know, I've been on board for a long time. I may disagree with a vote at the town meeting, but I'll always accept it. And I've done that in the past. Let me just say this. It is our duty and obligation of the vote of the town meeting to fight all its passage at the town meeting. The people have signed petitions, gone to town meetings in support of what they want for their community and what's best for its residents. And I remember Town Council Foskett at the Planning Board slash FinCon public hearing stating, he believed Article One would not stand up because he felt it was discriminatory. However, he felt that Article Two would probably hold water with the AG's office, subject to a two-thirds majority vote at that time. And that was his comment. I'm sure the Attorney General's office has heard from the opposing side. And now, especially, there are local lawyers that they can do briefs in opposition to Article Two. Folks out there and attorneys can provide briefs to the Attorney General's office to show some type of case law that they believe that the article is not warranted, Article Two. The Attorney General has to really realize the bottom line is, 1,000, and I'm going to make a motion in a minute, 1,571 people in this community signed three petitions to get to Article Two. Eighty-five percent of that vote at the town meeting supported Article Two. And I know there was a majority vote from the Board of Selectmen at that time. I'd like to make a motion to have Town Council engage with the AG's office in order for the AG to approve Article Two. Point one, eighty-five percent of the town meeting voted to approve it, Article Two. Town Council needs to defend the vote and the integrity of the vote of the town meeting. The other point, 1,571 people signed all three petitions in order to reach the goal of Article Two. Also, we need to put the Attorney General's office, or notice that if the, that the town, if she disapproves that, the town has a right to sue the Attorney General's office and bring the Attorney General's to court, no different than the Attorney General does to the federal court. We have that constitutional right here at a local level, if we deem necessary, to do that. I make that in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we have Town Council engage and defend that vote. And I'll say it again, local attorneys, residents of this community, they can provide briefs and send info to the Attorney General and recommend that they disapprove Article Two. And I'm sure that's been done. We need, on the winning side, to engage, let her know that, like I stated all the year previous, and that's substantial. That's a big, good-sized vote. And a lot of folks signed that petition knowing what they were signing. I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I accept that as a made motion. I'm looking for, or I would accept a second. I would accept a second.
Well, it's kind of unfortunate there's three members on the board, but I'm going to tell you folks right now, when I walk out their door tonight, the AG's office is going to find out what that exact vote was. And I'm also going to solicit our legislative delegation, our state senator, our two state reps, to do their job, also to engage. This has become a political football, and I know local attorneys have submit briefs in opposition to Article Two. Residents have contacted the AG's office. Now, she has to hear from the winning side, plain and simple. And that message is loud and clear, and I'll say it again, eighty-five percent of those folks in that auditorium voted that article change. It is not discriminatory. And 1,571 residents signed a petition three different times to get where we are. I, I said-
Through the chair, just a question.
And just, you know, and I understand that, you know, and I appreciate the fact, Mr. Chairman, at the time, you and Mr. Loud did support Article Two. And, you know, everyone has their rights for their vote. But I think it's time for her to listen to the winning side right now.
Through the chair, just a question. This was not a selectman's petitioned article, correct? It was an article put forth by-
It was not a selectman.
Mike McCoy and others. So, why wouldn't Mike McCoy and others get the attorneys together to fight? Why, why should the town have to do that? It was not a selectman article from the town.
He's asking for the, for the town to do that.
Well, you know something, I could just simply just ask the town manager. The bottom line is, Town Council has to, Town Council's job, you let the lawyers do their work. Town Council has an obligation and duty to defend the integrity and the vote of the town meeting, plain and simple. Why don't we just, obviously, there's not a vote. I'd like to have the town manager, at least ask Town Council, what his duty is, is Town Council. Is it his duty to defend the integrity and the vote of the town meeting? And if he says, no, it's not, because I remember one time you said, no, Mr. Manager. And if he says it is, well, he's the Town Council. I don't know what he's going to say. But I think we should also let the AG's office know about the winning side.
I'm going to chime in just briefly. And Jeff, I certainly want to make sure you do too. I guess, I didn't second your motion, Mike, because frankly, the Attorney General has not said that Article Two is-
Exactly. She needs to know.
All right. You, you keep on talking. I'll, I'll-
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I think I made my point. Go ahead. I apologize. Go right there.
Okay. Yeah. So, all she's saying is she's taking additional time to review it for constitutionality. That's all. That's, she's doing her job. All right? She has a team of, of attorneys and lawyers that are, that are looking at the language of the article as it was written and as it was passed and as it was voted on, and determining whether or not it meets legal muster based on Massachusetts Constitution. She's not making a determination of whether it's a good law or a bad law. That's not her position here at all. So, I appreciate your passion, Mike, but I, I'm not prepared to endorse or second your motion at this time. Now, when she does come back with whatever her findings are, then it might have been a moot point. She might say, yeah, you know what? It's, it's a crappy law. She may not like it, but it's constitutional and it might go forward. If she doesn't, if I were on this board with you, I might, I might give some, some second thought and some consideration to seconding your, your request to articulate through council the position of the vote at town meeting. At this point, I don't believe that's necessary. All she's doing is looking at it from a constitutionality standpoint. I think we ought to let her do her job, and that's what she's getting paid to do. So, that's my position on the issue. I'm sorry, did someone else, I forget. I think I interrupted somebody. Mr. Loud?
Mr. Chairman, to you and Mr. McCoy, I did not second your motion because last time I seconded one of your motions, a week later, I changed my mind because I thought better of it. And then you told me I was a flip-flopper and I don't know how to make my own decisions. So, I need to, I need to think about this motion. I am all for this article being passed 100% because I'm against any detox center in that location. So, that's the reason why I didn't second your motion. So, thank you. And I, and I say that to your face. I don't say it on social media like you do. Come on, guys.
But I'll say this, Mr. Loud. I appreciate what you said, but you changed your mind three times. On March 20th, at the Planning Board Public Hearing, you spoke in favor of it. And prior to that, on March 12th, at a selectman's meeting, the Planning Board slash Public Hearing on March 20th of 2018, you spoke in favor-
Of what?
You were just talking about, you were saying flip-flop. And was the article relative to Sharap's-
On March 20th, if you listened, Mike, I spoke-
You guys want to take this up after? You guys can have coffee and then wrestle this one up. Not specifically, no. But I'm sorry, did you-
Through the chair, even though this article went through at this point in time, it still does not prevent a detox from coming into the location that it's being proposed. And I thought I heard someone say that it would. So, I just want that, through the town manager, maybe he can agree to that or not.
That's correct. I mean, there is an area across the street that is-
So, you were about to speak, and I think I spoke over you. So, do you have something else to offer?
I think you pretty much covered it.
Okay. I'm sorry. Sir, I'm going to, because you didn't speak before. I will recognize you, if you don't mind stating your name and your address.
Michael Berry, 29, Blockner House. Everything just got summed up tonight. The AG's office said, we're going to put it off. We'll see what happens. There's two words here, guilty conscience, because it is incredibly discriminatory. That's all it is. It's mind-blowing. I've dedicated my life for free to helping people with all stages of addiction, with getting people into detox. I've been to the facilities, not heard of all of them through other people. I've actually go to them. I've had people die in my arms. I've knocked in over 30 people. I've seen it all. And I've seen what happens. I get really emotional about this. And I, to say you're going to ban hospitals in the second article, because the first one, it's 100% discriminatory. The first article was clearly from day one discriminatory. Second one, let's make it a little less discriminatory. It's the exact equivalent of making a white water fountain any black water fountain. People that are in recovery, people from substance abuse disorder are a protected class of people. And I've never been more mad in my entire life or more disgusted about the town I live in for 42 years to just blatantly ban it all. And everything, the fact that 362 Middle Sex can go in either way, that everybody still is voting on it thinking it's going to have any effect on that facility whatsoever, it's blowing my mind. And I hope, Mr. Chair, when Mr. McCoy goes off on his tangents, that you'd reel him in. Because it's, it's disgusting to people. I've never had a family member die from it. I had my best friend die from it. I've had more people than I can count die from it. More people died from last year than the Vietnam War. People say the number's 57,000. It's over 100,000. Because the respiratory distress ones don't get reported, the cardiac, you don't die from a cardiac arrest when you're 23 for no reason. I am with, excuse me. I'm very proud of Chief Begonis. I think he does an incredible job, and he gets a lot of crap for it. He stayed on because he believes in his mission, and he's going to keep doing it. I was in Tuxbury today, and there was, Ms. Hayes was there. It was covered. There was at least 100 people in the room. It was an octane training event. The DA was there, Aaron Ryan. There was a doctor that presented it. It was standing room only. And I've been in them before where there's 10 people in the room. You couldn't even fit in the room. There were so many people there. People with passion, with compassion, trying to save people's lives. It is very much a matter of life and death. To have another member, which I'm not going to throw names around because I know it's a big deal, to call people junkies on deciding board on what can come into this town, that does not infuriate you, then you have a problem. It is no different than using a racial term, sexual preference, handicapped. It's the same thing. Protected class of people, people going through the throes of this, they can't hate themselves anymore. Most of them just kill themselves. And to get spit on and kicked on by members of town who's supposed to look out for the public good and take care of a community problem, which is, this is very much a community problem, I demand that you change this. You change the way you treat people. You change the way you go about this. And even if you're not the one saying it, I demand you stand up and do the right thing and actually stop it. And say, we can't treat people like this. Not legally, but ethically. So, I've, I've talked to the AG several times. I know what's going to happen, but I'm not going to say it. And she didn't even say why she was putting it off. But someone went off because it's discriminatory. You know it's discriminatory. You know you're getting called out for it. And we'll see what happens.
Mr. Chairman, I want to let you know, I was the only selectman- Mr. Chairman, I want to let you know, I was the only selectman, and I agree with you of a gentleman calling individuals junkies. I was the only selectman to come out and say that was wrong what he said, and I even went a lot further than that. I want to let you know, and I appreciate what you do, and I'm not going off on no tangent. You believe it's something, and I believe, you know, it's a national epidemic. We all know that. You know, my concern was in the neighborhoods. That was my concern. I think we all agree that the location was the issue, and that was it. But I know, I appreciate everything you said, you know, and I know, you know, we don't have to talk on Facebook about it. I'll talk to you right now. It's a man-to-man. I'm in agreement with that gentleman calling everyone junkies, and I was the only selectman any guts to call him on that.
With all due respect, you guys are going off the reservation.
Well, I was just saying, we're having a nice conversation.
We're having a conversation about an article that the Attorney General is looking at, and you guys are talking about a word.
Well, that's what she's looking at. That was the thing that sparked her. The Board of Appeals Chairman calls people junkies when he considers something to do with a detox facility. That's a problem, and that makes her open the door and look further. That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, I would hope that she would open the door and look further, frankly. That's her job, and if she doesn't look further, then she's not doing her job.
It's your job to defend people in this community, too. Families of people that are...
It's our job to see that the government process goes effectively and fairly and equitably. You don't have to always like how that government process goes. At the end of the day, sometimes votes happen.
When discrimination is on the table and you do nothing...
All right. I'll go when you're done.
No one's standing up for it. I don't even, I have nothing against any of you personally.
Sir, we had special town meetings that the entire registered voter population is invited to come and participate in. You know how many we got there. So don't say that nobody is standing up for it. There was a room full of people that had their voices heard on both sides of this issue. The fact that the vote didn't come out the way you liked it, I'm sorry. Frankly, it didn't, I wasn't really jazzed about it myself. At the end of the day, it is what it is. Let's determine whether or not, let's see if it's determined whether or not it's constitutional. You may or may not like that answer, too. It's called democracy. Sometimes democracy kind of blows, but that's the way it goes. I prefer it over any of the other systems. I'm done with, oh, God, no. Mr. McDonald, I'm done with you, too. Mr. Semaglia, you're next. I appreciate that. Mr. Semaglia, do you want to read your letter, or shall I?
No, you, you're the head of the town manager.
All right. I'm going to go to the next line item here on our, this will be a board to consider in a few moments, but it's happy news. I got a letter just a few, about a week or so ago, and it is from our Department of Veterans Services Director, Louis Semaglia the fourth, the director, and it's written to me. "Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shampo, ten years ago, the town of Wilmington sponsored the Moving Wall on our common. This year, the moving Vietnam War memorial will be erected on the town common in Wilmington, Massachusetts from July 26th through the 30th, 2018, with permission of the Board of Selectmen. The Moving Wall is the half-size replica of the Washington, D.C. Vietnam Veterans Memorial and has been touring the country for more than thirty years. When John Devitt attended the 1982 dedication in Washington, he felt the positive power of the wall. He vowed to share that experience with those who do not have the opportunity to go to Washington. The Moving Wall, which contains the names of every service person killed in action during the Vietnam War, gives our community and our neighboring communities a special opportunity to have up-close and personal contact with an important symbol of our nation's heroes. While the wall is specifically a memorial to our Vietnam War deceased, it also serves as a reminder of the great sacrifices made by service men and women from all conflicts. Its presence in Wilmington affords the opportunity for residents of all ages, faith and political affiliation, to be unified in paying tribute to those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in defense of American values. The Department of Veterans Services is requesting the use of the Wilmington Town Common for the display of the Moving Wall, July 26th through 30th. Thank you for your time and consideration with this very important matter. Sincerely, Louis Semaglia, Director." Mr. Semaglia, that was a beautifully written letter. I appreciate your perspective on what the wall really represents, beyond even the, just the Vietnam servicemen and women who died and fought for us, and I appreciate you being here this evening, and I wanted to give you a moment to speak to this valuable and worthwhile endeavor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I'm going to be on the next agenda to talk about the Department of Veterans Services and what's going on in Memorial Day and everything, so I'll defer to that. I just want to say quickly, though, that the town of Wilmington did itself proud ten years ago in 2008. The couple that travels with the wall remembered the town of Wilmington, the common, and the display we put on, and the outpouring of support to the community. So I'm really looking forward to getting it again this summer, and definitely talking more at the next meeting.
Look forward to it. I know you wanted to get this on as a board to consider item tonight, just to sort of get the things moving forward, to get assigned the contracts and stuff, so we didn't want to defer that off to the next meeting. Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant this request, and I want to thank the Veterans Agency for your initiative on this. Appreciate that. I attended ten years ago, and I look forward to it again this July.
I have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on it?
I'll third that.
We have a third?
We enjoyed it ten years ago, and we plan on enjoying it again this year.
Yeah. I look forward to speaking more about it in a couple weeks when you come back to us, but I'm excited to move this forward tonight. So all in favor of granting the request, of course, loudly and unanimously? Thank you, Mr. Semaglia. We look forward to seeing you in a couple weeks, and we'll learn more about it at that time. Thank you, sir.
Next, under Board to Consider is the signing of the special town meeting warrant. I would just note that we have two articles on the warrant. The first, Article One, to see if the town will vote to eliminate multifamily housing in the central business in neighborhood mixed-use districts defined in the Wilmington zoning bylaw as follows: one, to rescind and delete from the Wilmington zoning bylaw Section 3.8.15 multifamily use in the neighborhood mixed-use district in its entirety; and number two, to rescind and delete from the Wilmington zoning bylaw Section 3.8.11 multifamily use in the central business district in its entirety; and three, to amend Table One principal use regulations with respect to the line under caption, quote, "residential uses," end quote, entitled, quote, "3.3.5 multifamily housing," end quote, to read, quote, R-10, R-20, R-60, and then, under N/M, no, neighborhood mix, no, neighborhood business, no, general business, no, central business, no, general industrial, no, highway industrial, no, limited industry, no, and site plan review, R. That is Article One. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain the following real estate, commonly known as the Sharapa Farm, and I won't go into the details on that, but it is described below. So the meeting, just as a reminder, the public hearing on this before the planning board and the finance committee is slated to take place on April 25th at 7:30 PM in the auditorium, and then the special town meeting itself will be held within the annual town meeting. The expectation is that it would be taken up after Article Two of the annual town meeting. So the board is asked to vote on this and to sign two copies.
So these are both petitioned warrant articles, so I guess we're really just voting to, I guess, close the...
Close the warrant.
Close the warrant and create the meeting. All right. So I would accept a motion to that effect.
Shall move.
Made. Second. Made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All in favor? Unanimous? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Four and one abstain. Thank you.
Next is a board to consider, a request of Scott Grant. This is an annual request. I'll just read it into the record. Dear Board Members, as a member of the, as members of the board are aware, this year's Fund on the Fourth celebration will be held from June 29th through July 2nd, with a rain date of July 3rd. As has been the case in the past, the Fourth of July Committee requests the board pursuant to its authority set forth in Section 5.1 and 5.11 of the Wilmington Rules and Regulations of hawkers and hawk and peddlers and transient vendors impose a restriction prohibiting hawkers, peddlers, and transient vendors and temporary or transient businesses from conducting business within one-half mile of the town common during the celebration. The July Fourth Committee itself does not derive a benefit from the imposition of this restriction, as members of the board are aware. However, numerous Wilmington-based nonprofit organizations rely on the Fund on the Fourth celebration for fundraising purposes. The imposition of the requested restriction will improve the opportunity for these groups to succeed in their fundraising efforts, and as a result, to support the many worthwhile causes they serve. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Scott Grant, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. That's a repeat request that we've seen many years going, as a reminder. Yes?
Yes.
Move the grant request? Second. Made and seconded by Mr. Loud. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? I have unanimous. Thank you.
We have a request from Sharon George to the board to appoint additional election workers. As you know, request, similar request was made a few weeks ago. Apparently, subsequent to that request, she learned that six of her election workers have decided to call it a career, and so as a result, she's looking to appoint additional workers: Phyllis Gorman, David and Susan Reese, Janet Marchillo, and Ruth Ann Soderholm.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to grant, to appoint these workers? Seconded.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
This is another board to consider. I won't read the entire letter, but it's from Chief Begonis, looking to request that the Board of Selectmen authorize use of the Rotary Park on August 7th for a national night out, which has become a very instrumental event every year for the last four or five years anyways.
Move the grant request?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. We're certainly grateful to the police for running this great event. Leave it at that.
The last item the board has taken up previously, which was the Girl Scouts, so we're, I'll sit there.
We've had an ample supply of public comments, so I will go to public comments in case there's anyone else in the audience that would like to offer a question or a comment on other issues. Yes, Mr. Rue in the back, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, the whole issue with Article Two and the Attorney General and all of that, as you did say, it's become a political football, largely due to your efforts, unfortunately, Mr. McCoy. However, I don't believe in name-calling or bringing up issues that do not pertain to this particular one. I do believe, from the very beginning, when this was all brought up, the intent itself has been discriminatory all along, and I think it does require further review, and I'm glad she's looking at it. She should, because if that intent, it could also open the town up to liability later. So this is something that really does have to be looked at patiently and thoroughly, not just for the good of the people with substance abuse disorder that are out there suffering every day, but also for everybody in this town. And I think we change people's minds one problem at a time. It doesn't happen overnight, and it doesn't happen with conflict and name-calling. So I hope that everybody keeps a cool head on this regardless of what the Attorney General decides, and that we continue to help everybody in our community, not just a group of neighbors, but everybody, including those people that are suffering from substance abuse disorder, for they need our help more than anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. West, did you have something? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. One, the Wilmington Kiwanis that asked me to speak, real quick, they meet on Monday nights. As you know, several months ago, they, Puerto Rico had a devastating hurricane that devastated the island, and the Wilmington Kiwanis was one of the many organizations that stepped up and had a couple of fundraisers, and they collected a multitude of items, and they actually used my office to do so. They would take, they would take the goods that they received and bring them down to Connecticut, and then to a church in Connecticut, and then down to Puerto Rico. I just wanted to announce that the Kiwanis did announce a, an additional drive on the 28th of April. Unfortunately, the church that the items were going to go to ran out of funding to continue the effort down, so as a result, they're canceling the event. I know that the Kiwanis does wonderful things, and they'll probably substitute it with something, an equally good fundraiser for a different cause at a different date, but I just, where it's been advertised, especially on the WCTV a couple of times, I just want to let, you know, on behalf of the Kiwanis, let the public know that that event has been canceled for this time. The other thing, a different organization, wanted to let you know Patriots' Day is coming up, and one of the things, one of the organizations that's near and dear to my heart is the Wilmington MedMen, and just wanted to let the public know that on Saturday morning at 2:00 AM, as has been tradition for many years, we will be out at the town common and marching through to Burlington Ave, basically reenacting what would have been symbolically the start of the American Revolution. And typically, we've had permission through the police department to light fire the muskets. So I just, you know, in an era where, you know, people hear guns and say, "Oh, my God, what's going on?" It's awesome. We actually have, believe it or not, at two o'clock in the morning, we have a good amount of people that actually stand out away from their windows and, you know, cheer us on, so to speak, symbolically as representatives of the brave men and women that helps start our call for freedom and to use the word you use, Mr. Shampo, democracy. The only other thing I'd like to ask is, I get concerned about when people abstain from votes, and as Mr. Vendelino, I'd asked him why he abstained on his vote, and that's through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. McCoy. Just curious, why did you abstain on the vote, I guess, two votes now? One on the, both involved in the petitioned articles, that Article One regarding the zoning change. I think you had abstained from the initial thing, and then tonight, just, again, just curious.
Yeah, to be totally honest, I believe it is within my right to obviously participate because there's no financial gain, number one, and I'm not in a butter, number two, and I just chose to abstain for these two articles. That's it. I just, I knew they were going to go for it because they're governed by law to do it, and I just thought I would abstain. That's it.
No worries. Again, I just, it's just, you know, I just find that, you know, when members of the board abstain, it's just opinion. I think that people should at least either offer a reason, or if not, just, you know, come forward and say, "I'm abstaining," just, again, just looking at our town government up front. So, other than that, I just want to wish everyone a happy Patriots' Day, and if any of you want to join us at two o'clock in the morning, come on down.
I hope, is WCTV planning on being there? Do we know? We need to, we need to work with that. We'll send a memo. Mr. McDonald, if you don't mind, sir, let's try to keep it poignant, okay?
Okay. I had a couple of questions, but since the topic of the detox center came up, I'd like to just offer a little input on that. I took the time to watch C-SPAN and the congressional hearings relative to the opioid crisis, and the hearings involved the Drug Enforcement Administrator. And a couple of things I want to point out. One was, the discussion involved the revelation that they used a town in West Virginia as an example. The name of it was Kermit, West Virginia, with a population of 4,000 people. A pharmacy in that town had prescribed 2 million doses of opioids, and so that was very startling to hear that, but it prompted me to want to reach out to this board to see what's being done to monitor the amount of prescriptions that are being prescribed for opioids in our pharmacies in our town. You know, is it 50 million? Is there any way you could find that out, Mr. Hall, through the Board of Health or some other type of avenue?
No. I, I'm sorry. As a member of this Board of Selectmen, I don't, I don't want him spending fifteen seconds researching how much, what prescriptions doctors are writing. Frankly, that's the, I don't know, American Medical Association and whatever boards those doctors report to, in my mind, and it's also, I guess, the responsibility of our police force to administer. I don't, I don't think Jeff Hall, I don't know, unless there's a majority of this board that wants the town manager to spend time on that, on that message.
If you're trying to solve a problem and you see a widespread problem with deaths from overdoses, and you, I've just given you an example of a town of 4,000 people having 2 million doses prescribed. I think it's something that should be looked at, but the other questions that I had is not pertaining to this, but, Mr. Hall, we have a new school superintendent coming in, in July, and would you be able to tell us what his salary rate is supposed to be as that contract was signed?
I don't have that knowledge personally, no. I don't have that knowledge personally, no.
Okay. And so, something, some people, because I'm running for the position of moderator, some people have asked me the question, can that contract be amended, or can it be denied at town meeting? For example, I believe the last superintendent was being paid $170,000, and so, some people feel as though that is excessive. At town meeting, when the school budget comes before the town for a vote, there are some people that are concerned that this person's salary could be excessive. And I'd like you to speak on the legalities of being able to vote for the school budget contingent upon the salary not exceeding, say, the governor of Massachusetts, for example.
I certainly am not an attorney, but I can say, one of the fundamental pieces of municipal governance, particularly with the Ed Reform Act that was passed in the 90s, is that the school department, the town meeting votes on the bottom-line budget, so the town meeting cannot sculpt out certain items within the budget. The budget of $40 million is, that is the amount that, and I'm using that as an example, but the amount, the bottom-line amount is what town meeting votes on, not on individual items.
Well, I believe they have the right to amend it, Mr. Hall.
In the words of a, of a much admired person who sat in this seat before me, you're done, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Welch, do you have something to offer tonight?
Michael Wells, 425 Potters Street. Quickly, did anybody have a chance to put any thought into the housing crisis, and in particular, the senior housing crisis I mentioned in the last couple of meetings, any of the selectmen?
I've been thinking about it, Mike.
Thank you.
And I'm hoping that at some point, this community will find a way to identify land and/or to identify existing parcels that are owned by the development community, and earmark some of that, that land for affordable housing, and address the specter of 40B that is looming over us in the next couple of years. I don't have any solutions for you. Frankly, I think that that's a direction that the town needs to be pursuing actively over the course of the next couple of years, and I hope that town administration and my colleagues here will, will take some active steps in that direction. But that's just me talking out loud.
Just a question. Mike, you've been championing the affordable housing or senior housing cause the past couple of meetings. You own, I think, a parcel of land over near Butters Row, near Salvation Army Butters Row. Are you planning to put that all as affordable housing and senior housing, since you're going to be championing that cause?
Actually, we are.
That's great. It's all going to be affordable?
No, it's not. Not at all.
Or it's all going to be senior?
Nope.
Okay.
Possibly. It could be. It could buy it as senior. But I don't actually own the land yet. The land owner, if you would like to approach him and ask him to do a reduced price on the land.
Well, I thought you were the, I thought you were the developer of that piece of land. So you're, you're going to be proposing affordable housing and senior, because there are two, there's two different, you know, senior housing is senior housing, which is restricted for age-wise, and affordable is affordable based upon state regulations. So I was just wondering, how much of it are you going to be designating in that parcel of land to affordable housing and senior housing, since you're championing that cause?
Yes, because there's no affordable units in that development at all.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't you put in affordable housing, since you're championing the cause for affordable housing?
For sure. When we purchased the land, I didn't realize there was an affordable housing crisis. It wasn't brought to my attention by anybody in the town at all. And when we bid on the land, it was bid on a market rate unit. So that's how we bid it. So...
But now that you know, then maybe you can revisit it and, and put, put behind what you're saying to good use, and, and use that piece of land towards affordable housing and, and senior development.
Right. And like I said, I would have to revisit with the seller
Okay.
to get a reduced price.
So you can come back to us and let us know.
I would actually definitely do that, for sure.
Perfect.
Without a doubt.
That's great.
Anybody else? Excellent. Jeff, if you don't mind. Oh, I'm sorry, let's do new business. So I'll start down to the left, Ed, if that's all right with you.
As I do at every meeting, I'd like to give a shout-out to a veteran. His name was Henry, they called him Harry Appleby. He was a U.S. Coast Guard veteran, longtime Wilmington resident. He unfortunately passed away in March. He was only 79 years young, so I would like to thank him and his family for his service to this country. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Shampoo, can I go?
Please.
I just want to take a couple of minutes to talk about something. Obviously, I'm one of, I'm the petitioner relative to the two zoning articles that are, one zoning article, as a matter of fact, the next annual town meeting, special within, and it's relative to neighborhood mix. And last week, I did talk to a couple of landowners on Lowell Street, and we have a mutual respect for each other, and I know they're not happy with my zoning article. And we got to talking, and evidently, what they need to do is, they, and I don't blame them, because that's, that's their right to do so, they need to basically lock in the zone. They're going to have to submit a plan to the planning board, but it has to go to the clerk's office to get the stamp, and to secure the zone for eight years, like Mr. Neeland did. And as I was just chewing the fat, talking to these individuals, they said to me that they need to get it in by the first posted advertisement date of the town crier. And I said to them, I go, geez, I thought you had until the planning board public hearing. Oh, no, we, we have to get it in. I talked to a couple of lawyers, and we need to get that in by the first advertisement of the town crier. That has the first public notification. I thought that was interesting. I'd like to pass this to the membership now. Jeff, you could pass this down, please. Three, four. You can pass that to one, to each of the members. What I have in front of me is the subdivision preliminary plan submitted by Mr. Neeland at 362 Middlesex Ave, and I'll talk about that in a second. So I got to thinking about that, and I do have a good memory, and I remember I was the real reason why this Article II went forward, obviously with the hope it concerned citizens. And I was just thinking of something. So I went to see Valerie Ginrich, and I said, can I get a copy of the preliminary, the preliminary subdivision plan that was submitted by Mr. Neeland to lock in the zone for eight years? I remember at the planning board public hearing, Mr. Sarantino said approximately at the 29 minute, 42nd mark, that, well, Mr. McCoy did bring up around the 23rd minute. I go, from what I understand, Mr. Neeland secured his rights to do it, so be it. And then he addressed that at 29 minutes, 42nd, and said, yes, I'm going to, he said, yeah, I want to refer to what Mr. McCoy said, and that's correct. Mr. Neeland did submit his preliminary subdivision plan to the planning board. I bought it. Everyone accepts it. And then I did a little bit more research in it. And from what I understand, you need to submit the preliminary plan prior to the first publication date. So when I saw Valerie Ginrich, I said, can I get a copy of the preliminary plan? And it's stamped from the clerk's office, November 27, 2017, and the plan, and the planning board slash FinCon public hearing was on November 30. I did ask Valerie, could you please tell me when the advertisement dates was on that? She did notify me. She said November 15, 2017, and November 22, 2017. I didn't say anything. I said, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was talking about. I ended up checking a few things out. I even called WCTV Thursday morning. I go, I'm not always on the computer yet, but thanks to Mr. Shampoo, I've got my smartphone, and I'm learning. I go, could you please send me the planning board slash FinCon public hearing of the 30th? And they said, yes. I said, and I remember Sean Neville did a fantastic job, and it was called the Detox Zoning Explainer, and did a fantastic job. And we all assumed that Mr. Neeland brought in his plan, got it stamped, and it was good to go. That's what I thought, and I would believe that Mr. Neville thought the same thing. Well, come to find out, folks, Mr. Neeland should have had that thing in by 4:30, November 14, 2017. And I just want to ask Jeff, I checked this out, and this is correct. Jeff, I'm asking you, as the town manager, do you know when the official deadline to secure a preliminary subdivision plan to lock in the zone for eight years? Do you know the exact deadline? Because the stamp here says November 27, by the town clerk's office, that's when Mr. Neeland submitted his plan. The public hearing was November 30. And according to this, and if, gentlemen, if you can take a look at the second page, I wrote down advertisement town crier, November 15. He had to have gotten this in by November 14, at 4:30 p.m., stamped by the clerk's office. That never happened. This application is null and void. There's no way this man can go forward to the planning board anymore, or the Board of Appeals. And I ask you, Mr. Manager, do you know exactly when the official deadline is to that?
I don't offhand, no. I mean, I don't.
All right. If you could, where you don't know, could you ask town council? And if we're right, then this thing cannot go forward. It's dead. It's null and void. Or maybe I could be wrong, and I'm not the first time I'd be wrong, and I'll admit to that, but I believe I'm 100% correct on this. And like I said, you learn something new every day. And that's all I got to say, folks. That's it. So if you could get to the town council, and the first thing if I could say, if you could find out from town council, if this is valid, and if he did miss the deadline, then you need to immediately contact through the town council, if he says it's null and void, you need to contact the Board of Appeals and Planning Board immediately tomorrow morning to say, this thing's dead. This thing's, this thing's void. He missed the deadline. Didn't do it right.
Certainly, I would expect that if that was an issue, it would have been up, been brought forward quite some time ago. But the question is whether the plan that Mr. Neeland submitted was submitted within, in a timely manner. Is that your question?
Well, evidently, there's rules and regulations in the statutes, and it states that a preliminary plan of, to be submitted to get the lock of the zoning for the eight years, has to meet prior to the first publication of the, of the local, of the news agency, and that would be the town crier. And just like you, I accepted this was rule of law, and when people in the planning board tell me this, you accept it. And I thought that too. But sometimes you find a wrong, and you want to try to make it right. And I'm asking you to, where you don't know, you should really ask town council tomorrow.
Well, certainly, my expectation, and I will clarify this or confirm this, but my expectation was that as long as Mr. Neeland obtained, filed that plan prior to the vote of town meeting, his zoning was locked in, but I will confirm.
I thought that, well, I thought it was prior to the planning board FinCon public hearing on November 30. And that's exactly, no one really said when the deadline was. They said, well, Mr. Neeland, if you check the tape with Mr. Sarantino, at approximately 29 minutes and 42nd, said he did submit the plan to the planning board, and he's locked in for eight years. And I'm not, you believe that. I mean, you do want to believe government, obviously. And I bought that too. And I, and I just, I, like everyone else. But it's not like, oh, I gotcha or anything. And it just, when I had the conversations with these two gentlemen relative to Land on Lowell Street, I said, wow, let me check something out. And I did see Valerie to get the stamp. And this is, I said, I would like to see the preliminary plan. She goes, you talking the whole thing? No, I want to see the plan that's stamped, that stated that you received, given him the eight years on the lock of the zone. And this is what she gave me, and it says right here, application for approval of preliminary plan, Form B, and it's owner, applicant, veteran LLC. And it was stamped on the 27th. So if you could just get that checked out tomorrow, just let us know.
Does the withdrawal of the Article affect that?
No, no, this is something different. This is back in, this is back in November 27. The public hearing was November 30, 2017. It was relative to Article II, okay? And he lands, and he locked in the zone. And that's what I believed, and I'm sure everyone in this room, the manager, I believe, I believe that's, was accurate. But come to find out, it's not accurate. We need, we need the town council to look at it and get opinion. That's all. Plain and simple.
What I think, the way I interpret it is, what are the rules? Let's get them, you know, what are the actual rules? Right now, it seems like, and I, I'm with you, Mike. I just, I take the rule when someone that I hold in, as an expert, and they tell me what the rules are, I believe what they're telling me. So let's find out what the actual rules are. If someone hasn't followed the rules, then there it is, right? Then we know what to do. I think it's, it's an easy, it's an easy course of action, right?
Mr. Chair, I would just note, you know, for future, at future meetings, that the, I think there needs to be care given to the types of items that are brought up under new business. As we remember from the prior meeting where there was a, or two meetings ago, where there was a item brought up under new business for the board to consider taking action on a special town meeting. The open meeting law is established so that the public can be informed in advance of what the matters are to be considered before the board and actions to be taken. So certainly, under new business, the types of things referencing veterans who have passed on is informational and not an issue. But when the board is looking to take up, or to instruct me to take up actions under new business, I think the concern I have is that someone could make a case that they were not forewarned of this item coming up under new business as a discussion item.
Maybe you need to ask town council that too tomorrow.
No, although that, that discussion was had with town council, and town council has informed me that new business is not for the purpose of taking up unadvertised items on the agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would agree with, with Mr. Hall on this. I, you know, every once in a while, we get these, I call them hand grenades from Mike. You just, you know, when this could have been put on the agenda, or you could have communicated with town manager Hall, so he could have found this out for tonight, but now we delay, and we delay, and you just throw it out there for the sake of throwing it out there. I think it either goes on new business, it goes on the agenda, or you communicate with the town manager and tell him what you found, and ask him to look it up, so that we could have taken it up tonight and be done with it. All these, I, again, I referred to these little hand grenades that you throw out there and expect people to react on it.
No, it's very simple. Three lines on the other one.
Well, you should have just, you should have just brought it forward and communicated with your fellow colleagues.
Mike, may I ask, when did this information come into your, to your knowledge? Did you, was it, was it after 4:00 on Thursday?
No, it was Wednesday. It was Wednesday around 2:00.
Then it should have gone through the town manager.
I mean, honestly, it was Wednesday at 2:20 in the...
Then it should have been an agenda item tonight. It should not have been brought here as, as, to use Mr. Kyra's terminology, you hand grenade it. And if you had it on Wednesday, if you had it before, and I'll give you a little out, if you want to do hand grenades in the future, make sure that you get the information after 4:00 on Thursday, because the agenda was put together 4:00 on Thursday, and it could have been in the town manager's hands. So we could have had a good conversation about this. He might have had the ability to have done some homework ahead of time.
Could have been.
And we could, it could be a done, done issue, but now it's this thing, right? So it, it's not necessary, and it's certainly not the intent or the spirit behind new business. So Jeff, if we, you know, I think it's worthwhile to at least exhaust whether, what the set of rules are, and whether or not all are following the rules. Mr. Kyra?
Yes. Now that the snow is starting to melt a little bit.
You think so? It's supposed to snow tomorrow.
Well, then maybe that'd be a good thing, because it would cover up all the bottles and, and just the trash that I see around. And, you know, I was walking down Woburn Street the other day, and down around the field, the Woburn Street School field, and the grass looks beautiful. And, but then I look into the wooded area around the, from the playground all the way around, about 15 to 20 feet in, there's nothing but water bottles, Gatorade bottles, even, even some athletic water bottles that is, that are in there. And, you know, some people say, ah, maybe coming from the kids at Woburn Street, the kids when they go out to, in the playground to, for recess. But I think it's more coming from the kids that utilize that field and use it for lacrosse. Believe me, I understand, I'm not accusing anybody for, for littering, but there's litter there. There's just water bottles that shouldn't be there. I mean, they should care enough for their facilities. They should respect the facilities enough, where when they're done with it, they take it and they dispose of it appropriately, or they recycle it. Now, I know we don't have barrels down there, and I, and I know this carry-in, carry-out, some places it's working, some places it's not, but we should keep an eye on it. But I'm, I'm just wondering, can we tell the, the youth teams that are down there, and maybe the high school teams that are down there, to take about 20 minutes out of their pr... practice? And, but right now, they can go in there, because there's, there's no foliage, and there's no growth of grass and that, and they can just pick up those bottles and dispose of them. I, just, it's just so frustrating to see it when you're driving around town on the off-ramps and on-ramps, and, and I know that we have the DPW, they put a cleanup day together, where they go into the various brooks and stuff, and they clean the, the brooks and the waterways.
Right.
I'm wondering if we can provide to the residents that want to, the yellow bags or something, maybe that same day, if they can't go, I mean, I certainly am not going to wade in water, and, but I can walk around my neighborhood and pick up, you know, maybe the same day that they're doing it, we make it a, a whole neighborhood cleanup weekend or something. But I, it just, I guess it's just a pet peeve of mine, when people don't dispose of things appropriately, and they disrespect what we try to give them, and that's good facilities, and it just, it just bothers me. So I, I don't know if that's something that you can mention to.
Yeah, I can certainly get the word out to the various groups.
Maybe they won't do anything.
The, the brook cleanup, are you talking about the one that typically happens in September, that it's actually conservation that sponsors?
Is that what it is?
Yeah, it's, it's always in September, it's a.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I thought it was in the spring, it's in September, okay.
Yeah, yeah. But let me reach out to the youth groups.
Maybe they can organize a town cleanup, or some of the DPW in the spring, and let the brook cleanup be in the, in the fall.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Yeah, that's a good one. It goes back a few years, when I was active or involved in youth soccer. At the beginning of the season, there was always a meeting of all the coaches, and the heads of the organization would sort of just do a little talk about the coming season, and one of the bullet points inevitably was, you know, care of the fields, make sure you take, if you have recycling, take it off, make sure the coaches or the, or the parents do a final sweep as you come off the field. And I think that's just, it's a healthy message, right? Because if one or two kids do it, and even if they do it by mistake, I don't, you know, certainly not, people don't have bad, bad intent always, but if other folks see, a few folks doing it, then it becomes the rule instead of the exception, right? So it just, I think it becomes a, really a thing of messaging and communication. All the leaders of the respective youth sports organizations ought to be communicating with the coaches, and the coaches with the parents, that it's all of our responsibility to do that, and I think it's, it's worth bringing up. I'm glad you did. Greg.
Thank you. I just, real quickly, want to take the opportunity to publicly compliment Chairman Bjork and the school committee on their hiring of the new superintendent. I think people around town are really excited about having a new leader, and I wish him success, and I look forward to welcoming him to Wilmington. And I know it's been a, a long process for them, so I want to compliment them all.
Thank you, sir. I've said enough tonight, I think, so thank you for that. So Jeff, if you don't mind, running down through the important dates.
Yes, first is April 10, Boston Bruins Foundation Be Fit First Responder Challenge Celebration at the Public Safety Building, 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. We have a brush drop-off April 11, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, again on the 14th, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 17th to the 21st, Curbside Collection of Yard Waste, brush drop-off on April 18, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and again on the 21st, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 22, Where One Wilmington Run for Wilmington and the Kim Forte Walk. April 23 is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, Room 9, 7:00 PM. April 25 is another brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. April 25, Finance Committee Planning Board, Public Hearing, Town Hall Auditorium, 7:30 PM. I would just note one other date that has been finalized, and that is on April 26, the forum for the Analog Tiff. You'll recall that we had originally scheduled that for the 25th, but given the conflict with the public hearing, it's now going to be the 26th at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Auditorium. April 28, Annual Town Election Polls, open 8:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. April 28 is another brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 28 is also a drug takeback, Public Safety Building, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Then again, April 30 through the 4th of May, Curbside Collection of Yard Waste, brush drop-off on May 2, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Again, on May 5, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And the annual town meeting, the Town Hall, the high school auditorium, 10:30, as well as the special town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add? I don't have my exact date, but I think May 2 is the Special Olympics at the high school?
I believe it is.
Just something to be noteworthy, that was a great event last year.
Thank you very much for recognizing that. Unless there's anything else, I'd accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll take it from Greg, seconded by Mr. Loud, all in favor?
All right.
Unanimous. Thank you very much, and good evening.